Good morning, everyone. I have nine thirty, so I'll go ahead and call the order. Whoever, please stand quickly.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First thing I have on the agenda is the approval of minutes for August 15th, 2022. Are there any minutes? Hearing none, if there's no objection, those are approved. Next is the Trivial requisition, September 1st, 2022, amount $22,331. There's no objection, that is approved. Next is the accounts, accounts payable for August 25th, 2022, in amount of $120,987.38. There's no objection, that is approved. Next is accounts payable September 1st, 2022, in amount of $401,367.68. There's no objection, that is approved. Next is manual checks for August 26th, 2022, in amount $1,013,142.36. There's no objection, that is approved. Next is manual checks for September 2nd, 2022, in amount $33,145.56. There's no objection, that is approved. Next is approval payroll for August 15th, 2022, in amount $290,75.36. There's no objection, that is approved. Are there any announcements or changes to the agenda? With that, we can move on to public comment. I will remind speakers that you have three minutes, and if you're online, please reach your hand. I'm going to start with the list. First name on the list I have is Jaclyn Millar.
Good morning. First, I would like to review that as of August 25th of this year, I had resigned from the Charlestown Utility Board. My letter has been posted in the council meeting. The reason is I moved, so I no longer qualify as the, for the seat. The second thing is I gave you a handout of the review of the June 26th, 2018 PSC order. It's the understanding of the composition of the Charlestown Utility Board. This order clearly shows that PSC's understanding of the spirit of the purchase agreement. Your county, non-municipal citizens, cannot vote for Charlestown politicians. I believe this is and was the thinking of the approval of the original agreement. So when you're considering my replacement, please consider that. Next, I do want to put a plug in for the, to have this commission really look at the JUI purchase agreement with West Virginia American Water. I did provide you the Boone County County Commission letter, short and sweet, to the point, to, to the Public Service Commission to consider, to make sure that the rate payers are represented and that they're considered with this. I reviewed some of the rates that were on page 19 of the PDF of the purchase agreement, which is posted as case number 220796 WSPC. And I don't see anywhere where there's a minimum, so my concern is there's some missing pieces there. And I hope this cap, this commission really looks into that, make sure that the Public Service Commission knows that you are concerned about that. The commission considered the rates and information may not be apparent, like the minimum charges. The average user of JUI will sustain 37% increase in rates, which appears to permanently roll what should have been a temporary surcharge of $12 for the three mountain water systems over a decade ago. The purchase price is significantly greater than net book value, while our legislators passed a bill in lockdown called SB 551, which states sales price is flexible. I urge this commission to review what is about to happen to your constituents. I also urge rate payers to seek information and concern for themselves in this matter, be proactive. I would also like to appeal to this commission's sense of support for the Charlestown Utility Board in its acquisition of K-Bro utilities in Shenandoah Junction Public Sewer. As you know, CTUB, which this commission has specialized local interest resulting from consolidation, has successfully achieved steps in rate equalization and environmental improvements directly related to consolidation, which was approved by this commission a few years ago. Recent dynamics in utilities. Is my time up?
That was your three minutes.
Okay, all right. I will come back and maybe finish that off, but I think you get the idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the list is David Tev.
David Tev, just kind of like long resident. It was very disappointing that on your agenda today, but they do not put these numbers that reflect what you just approved. And for over a million dollars to be approved on manual checks. Once again, it's appalling. How can you write a manual check when this county commission is supposed to be at? With that said, two weeks ago, ZCC approved the $145,000 for the Development Authority to prepare a 50,000 square foot building site pad. You can't get a stormwater permit for it. Don't cost a whole lot more than that. As a matter of fact, all the property out there has a building permit problem. Even bigger than that, it's across the whole county. There's over 100 stormwater permits. They're invalid due to the fact, real simple, they do not have a release into open water. That's required. And it's with the Chesapeake Bay agreement that comes into full effect next year. Y'all got a big problem. So here you're throwing money, $145,000, at a pad, so that somebody else doesn't have to pay for it if they buy the property, and you can't get a stormwater permit. This includes the school bus garage, Tima, and guess what? Rock. Imagine that. I've been saying that for five years. Finally coming to a head. Do the open government portal financial reports. Y'all got a real problem. Y'all have stacked money supposedly into people's budgets. That's not there. Again, back to the 40% of underbudgeting. And I just haven't found the money yet, because nobody's released the bank accounts to me yet. Portal, a lot of money. One of them right here says $512 million in three years. I did not make this up. This came off the portal. Where is, where did it go? How's it done? I don't think it's true, but if you manipulate it around, out of the money, maybe it is true. So, on my case at the West Virginia Supreme Court, that all you guys are notified. You'll be able to have your name written at the US Supreme Court, and you can add it to your accomplishments of other illegal activity. Y'all have a nice day.
Just anybody raise their hand if you want?
Yes, I have Stacy Pam. Pam, yourself give in.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. I just have a couple comments about several items that are in the agenda packet today. First of all, related to the solar facilities and the building permit fees. There doesn't seem to be very much information as to when the county collects these fees, what they will be utilized for. And then, there wasn't enough information last time that the commission addressed this to make a decision, so here we are today. And what it appears happened from the very little information in the packet is that our county engineer asked the developers themselves what they're used to paying, or what they, I guess, would find acceptable. I find that unacceptable as a community member. When it came to decommissioning and bonding, the county decided to rely on the DEP and the state to oversee that program and do nothing specific for the county. And now, again, when it comes to permitting fees, what specifically does the county need to do to ensure that these are developed in a way that won't be detrimental to the community? And what do we need those fees to cover? Do we need to do a water study? Do we need to do a ground or soil assessment? There's not really any detail of what the county requires. And while we might look at other areas, do we know what they're actually using those fees for? And what they collect fees in other places from that might offset those? So I think we really need to take the approach of looking at the individuality of our county and what's needed in those fees. Next, I'd like to comment on the appointment to the JCDA. Apparently, today, we have a candidate for an opening, and I don't recall seeing that there was any type of notice or any information presented that there were going to be an appointment for a citizen rep. I understand that the current one had resigned back in June, but what is the process? There's only one candidate listed for today to be considered, and it's one that it really appears that there would be a conflict of interest, that this person is the president of the Chamber of Commerce. And a lot of businesses, even before, they don't even necessarily have to be operating in the county, become members of the Chambers of Commerce, and that seems like it would be a conflict for our Development Authority that's supposed to be keeping in the best interests of the county and not the businesses itself. And then, I'd just like to ask that if, if there are considerations for the TIF, the Tax Incremental Financing that's being presented again by the Hilltop House, that the county makes sure that that is open to the public? That group is requesting a special meeting with the commissioners, and that is something that the public should be a part of. But I hope that we have a good understanding, because we, the public is told that we need businesses to support our tax base. And if we are doing away with taxes or forgiving them, then that is not taking care of the responsibilities of the community for the impacts the business may have. So I'd like you to consider that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person that would like to make public comment? All right, hearing none, public comment is closed. We can move to Gen 9 number one, Tom Henson, grant applications? Not this year.
Good morning. I'm here for the renewal of the application for the Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant. The really only major change for this year's grant is that they are pushing to reinstitute the coordinator for Region 6. And that covers all of the areas that our grant services, but also the grant that Morgan County services as well. But they just have to, we would pick up the coordinator, and it's just a contract position. They wouldn't be in employee of benefits or anything like that. And there is a resolution that Michelle provided for me. I don't know if I have to read that, or if you guys just stumble.
The resolution pretty much just says that the commission is approving the grant application for an appropriation of up to $250,000. The grant allotment that we've already been awarded is just under $200,000. They often have grant opportunities become available throughout the year. And if you approve this up to $250,000, it speeds up the process for updating those additional grant monies for additional overtime patrols and equipment that may become available. The resolution approves an appropriation amount of up to $250,000, and you'll need to approve that resolution as well today.
I'll move to approve the application for the Governor's Highway Safety Grant, in order for us to make sure the president's side of grant office is approved.
Second.
Still moving second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Which cares? Next up is Gen 9 number two, Ms. Roger.
This item is with regard to solar facility, utility level solar facility and residential, commercial, individual permit fees. Building permit fee schedule does not have a permit fee for residential, commercial, solar systems and/or for utility scale solar farms and facilities. As a result, part of engineering, planning, zoning, research, or other jurisdictions across the country were charging for residential, commercial, and solar facility permit fees. The purpose was to determine a fee that is both consistent and reasonable compared to what the solar industry, is the solar industry norm. And it is also fair relative to what other commercial project types are being charged in Jefferson County. So we didn't want to charge a fee on utility scale solar facilities where it would appear to other businesses in the county that they were paying more than solar utilities. So we wanted to be fair relative to that. That was kind of our goal. Presentation of solar farm facilities permit fees data, a recommendation was made at July 21st meeting. Fee recommendation at the July 21st meeting would result in a fee amount of $400,675 for the first solar farm project currently processing for approval in Jefferson County. The county commission did not adopt the recommended fee amount. That's to be researched further. Since then, data was provided by two solar facility developers, OPDE Energy and Torch Clean Energy. And the dilemma we have in this whole thing is, everybody wants to know what's going, what's going to cost on the project. We've never had a project like this in the county. We don't know what's going to be involved, but we're trying to, like, not cut ourselves short on the fee, make sure we're trying to cover things. We, we can't find any data that tells us, like, you know, another, another entity, what, what man hours they had in inspecting a solar facility, what they ran into. It would be like asking us, what would it cost to build a car? We've never built a car. We, we don't know, so we might turn to car manufacturers to try to get some data, and that, that's kind of our approach here. If you ask us what it would cost to build a house, even though we don't build houses, we, we could come up with some numbers. You know, and it might just turn out a flat, just estimated by $100 square foot. And that, and that's the, that's the arena we operate in. My point is that with solar utility scale solar facilities, we have no information on that. We've never dealt with it. So we've been reaching out, trying to get as much information from wherever we can. So we got, we got these three data points, and OPDE Energy said that in Champaign, Illinois, they paid a rate that would result on an 80 megawatt solar farm, which is the first one that's coming in through now, that's the size of it. It would be a fee of $104,850. And then, Christian, Illinois, they paid a rate that would result in a fee of $88,000. Torch Clean Energy provided data on Surry County, Virginia, and based on the rate they paid there, the same 80 megawatt solar farm would pay $123,887. They noted that the fee did not include any site plan review fees or conditional use permit fees, which would be additional. And I just mentioned that for utility scale solar farms and facilities in Jefferson County, there is no site plan fee. Site plans are processed free essentially for every business in the county. We just charge a building permit fee. Everything that occurs with planning, commission, zoning, with the exception of a few minor fees on, like, bearings requests, et cetera. They process for free at this point, and they have been for my 21 years here. So there's, and I also wanted to point out that there's no longer an impact fee for businesses. That said, my recommendation, based on everything then, is that for utility scale solar facilities, that it be at a rate of $13,500 minimum for up to five megawatts, plus $1,400 per additional megawatt, and then, plus $350 base fee and 25 cents a square foot for any apartment structures that are on the site. So I took the 80 megawatt facility and their apartment structures, and that fee would result in $119,650. And that, my recommendation for both residential, commercial, individual, rooftop, or ground mounted solar, that it be a $400 base fee, plus five cents a square foot of panels. And in my example, if you had 1,000 square feet of rooftop solar panels, your fee, permit fee would be $450. That's both for residential and commercial. So I think that the fees are consistent with what solar developers are paying, and I'm fair compared to what other large commercial projects in the county are paying. And if you adopt this fee, or whatever fee, we'll have to update our fee schedules to add that fee into it. And so, that's my recommendation. And I'd just say one more thing. And if we get into this, you know, we can say a year down the road, two years down the road, maybe we're charging too much, maybe we're not charging enough. We can revisit it and change, change the fee. It's not forever.
That was going to be my first question. Does this cover what you can see as the costs? There, there might be some costs we don't foresee yet, but does this cover everything that you know of?
I think it will, but I'll know better once we get through a couple of weeks.
Okay, but like you said, we can adjust it later.
And I can tell you this. The whole, the department as a whole, has a budget of around 1.2, 1.3 million. And you have not, with the exception of a few years, covered those costs through your fee, fee schedule. So it's not like this is like extra money that goes and gets spent on something else. We're, we're doing more business, and more fees are coming in, but I still don't think we're up to where we're covering the total cost.
When Raj and I were going over this, these numbers, one of the things that I, I'll just suggest, made a recommendation is that if you do adopt this, I would pilot it for a year and a half. Just to see if we can come back to you a year and a half and say, did we cover our costs? Were there any suspicious, et cetera, any unexpected costs that just rose and we didn't expect? Just want to make sure we can get our line on this, on this model, so.
Raj, can I ask you just for the sake of the caller and the people in here, what the permit fees are used for? Can you just give some, a few items that the permit fees are used for?
Okay, well, the permit fees cover the cost of running the department. So you have, you have three, you have a plan reviewer and two building inspectors, a commercial building inspector. You have two permit clerks that are taking in permit applications. We did plan review of all the architectural plans. We perform periodic inspections for compliance with the code. You have vehicles, you have fuel costs, all that. You have supplies. And that's, that's building permits inspections. And then, on top of it, you have these, these projects processed through planning and zoning. You have county planner, zoning administrator, and you have two clerical people in, in planning and zoning. And then, you have the county engineer who reviews all the engineering aspects, compliance with, you know, anything from parking to grading, to stormwater management, et cetera. And then, you require on commercial projects that they, for site plans, if they post a bond, destruction bond, for 115% of the amount of the cost of constructing, that that's in the land use regulations. And we manage that bond. We write the agreements. We hold the surety. We manage everything. We have a land development inspector that goes out and does periodic inspections on the development as far as are the roads compacted and ready for stone? The stormwater management installed properly? We even that require surveyors to do surveys of the ponds and the outlet structures to confirm they match what's on the plan. And a lot of times, they haven't had to get fixed. And so, we manage that whole bond. I mean, we live, we'll live with a project, a bond in a project for two, three, or four years. We're constantly managing that, reducing bonds, and finally releasing the project. Then you have your office manager who's routing the workflows, what's, what's got to get where, dealing with customers coming in with questions and getting them to where they need to go to get their issue taken care of. And then you have your code enforcement officer who enforces the regulations. And when somebody's not compliant, he has to issue his notices violation, follows up on them whether or not they brought the thing into compliance. If not, he's then got to file warrants and go to magistrate court and seek rolling in court to force them to do it. So there's, there's all that stuff going on, and that's where the money gets spent.
I just, I just wanted some clarity for people listening, people in here as to why.
There's a lot of charges for.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else for the commissioners?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the residential, commercial, and solar farm facilities building permit fees as recommended by staff today and set them for one year with the plan review again at that time.
So, moving second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Which cares?
And this is not on the agenda, but I need to understand the bonding. I know the state's doing it.
You're talking about the decommissioning.
Yeah, decommission.
Yeah, so DEP is requiring a decommissioning bond to be posted at, at that level within one year of operations beginning. My understanding of that law is that there's a provision in there that says that we can't have a decommissioned bond at the local level. That it's all posted at the state level with the DEP. So we haven't received any applications for that yet, because there aren't any facilities that are in operation yet.
Okay, so it's within one year, so.
Within a year.
I'll contact DEP for more information. Thank you.
We go ahead? Yep. I'll move convenience of the chair review board. Moving second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Good morning. Here from the probate office to present three separate matters for you today. If I could move around a little bit with the, the order that's on the agenda. The first thing I'd like to present would be closure of the estates of Lindsey R. Hurst III and Patsy Ann Hurst. You should have in front of you the two first and final accountings for both estates, prepared by Henry W. Moore Jr., who is the administrator on both estates. These estates did not meet the deadline for our quarterly review in July, and Mr. Moore has asked that we have a special session to close both of these estates.
I'll move that we close the estates of Lindsey R. Hurst III and Patsy Ann Hurst.
Second.
Still moving second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Which cares?
Second item I would like to present is the request to appoint a new chair commissioner for the estate of Larry K. Kraus Sr. Again, you should have the letter from one of the beneficiaries. Again, you should have the letter from one of the beneficiaries, Michael McWiggin, on the estate of Larry Kraus, where he is, has questions to the executor of the estate regarding tangible personal property and some homemade furniture and the disposition of that. And also, he has some objections to the appraisement inventory that was filed by the executor. So in this type of situation, we would ask that the estate be referred to a fiduciary commissioner for further review and to look over everything and sort of serve as a mediator to bring the, the issue to a resolution. So we just need to get your approval to refer to a fiduciary commissioner.
I'm moving to refer to fiduciary commissioner for the estate of Larry K. Kraus.
Second.
The move in second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
And the last issue that we have before you today would be the petition to remove executor Edward Wise from the estate of Irma Jean Wise, deceased. Both parties, the petitioner and Mr. Wise are both represented by counsel who's here today. You should have in front of you the petition to remove, which spells out the reasoning. And then also, there is an answer to the petition to remove the executor that's been filed. So I'm guessing you all will probably want to hear from the attorneys from the council that's representing both sides.
Commissioners, if I may interject, this, I think would be appropriate to refer to some sort of fiduciary commissioner because there's a number of issues that have been raised in the petition. We've got a will, we've got a trust document in which the rights of some of these folks may be determined by a pour-over trust and the language of that, which I think we need to be looked at. There's realist, allegations of real estate being sold either properly or improperly. And attorney, reliance on attorney advice in doing that, and whether or not that was in the trust or out of the trust. There's just a lot of issues that I think would be more appropriate for a fiduciary commissioner to hear because I think it's gonna take a bit of time, and I think it may require a variety of legal determinations.
If I may, I completely agree with that. The only opposition that I would have to that would be that at times, when these matters are referred to a fiduciary commissioner, sometimes they just get so bogged down and time just starts to, to get away from, from us with, with these matters. If, if, I don't even know if this is possible, but if you could affect some sort of a cease and dislike, like a, bring everything to, to a halt until the fiduciary commissioner. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that the executor be, not be allowed to like sell any more property or transact anymore, do any more business transactions as far as the estate is concerned until it can go before a fiduciary commissioner and have a fiduciary commissioner look into things. Because, I mean, that's just my suggestion. I don't even know if that's legally possible.
I'm not sure if we can put an injunction in like that.
I think, I think you could require, you could perhaps require additional bond. Or we could refer to someone that we don't normally refer these to that might. I think sometimes our fiduciary commissioners get stacked up.
I agree. I agree. So possibly even a special commissioner, maybe that's not one of our normal fiduciary commissioners, but that is an attorney and that has the time to, to invest in.
When, when I read this, and I don't know, I mean, I know both of these councils. When I read this, it popped into my head that Richard Gay would be a good person to refer to since this seems to be the kind of thing that involves a little bit complicated stuff.
I don't know.
But I don't know who's, what these attorneys.
I believe, just in mentioning that name, I believe that he's had some involvement in this prior. So you may, there may be a conflict with that, but.
I don't know.
Yeah.
May we, I'd like to, commissioners, thank you for putting us on the agenda this morning. My name is Lane Gill. I represent Carolyn Wise and Jessica Hess. And Kathy Santa Barbara represents Edward Wise. We did have a conversation yesterday about the possibility of a fiduciary commissioner. We have someone in mind that we both agree with will do a fantastic job. I will note for the commission that we also have a collateral action filed in the circuit court. This commissioner, who we are thinking about, we have not spoken to him yet, but he also has the respect of the circuit court, Judge Hammer, who is overseeing that matter. So I believe that we would be in agreement without speaking for Ms. Santa Barbara with a fiduciary commissioner being appointed.
And in fact, I do agree, and I, we believe, it was my suggestion that we use Frank Hill. He's a CPA as well as a attorney, and we think that he would do a great job. It's a lot to wade through, and I think there are a lot of issues in the trust as well as in the estate. So we, I guess we would agree with the appointment of a fiduciary commissioner and would ask that that person be Frank Hill.
Well, this is the first. We have two attorneys agreeing on something.
And you will know that collectively, we talked for about five minutes.
Well, it sounds like an easy solution to me, so thank you all. Thank you all. I will move a motion to, to appoint Frank Hill as a fiduciary commissioner. I guess for the state or the, of, of, of the estate of Edward Wise, from the estate of Irma Jean Wise, deceased.
I'll second the motion. Does Mr. Hill have to agree to this? I mean, we've appointed him. Is there, he may not agree to take this on, right?
He may not.
If he doesn't agree, come back here next week.
Yeah, yes.
There may be a conflict or.
I just, you know, it sounds like it's gonna take some time to figure it all out. All right, well, wish everyone success in resolving the matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Whose cares? Thank you. I move the reconvene and regular session. The move in second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. We're back in regular session. Next I have is agenda number four, interviews and appointments, starting with the JCPA, one on expired term. Chris Puller? Gotcha. Thank you. Is he here or is he online? Okay. So what's the leisure of the commission goes with my table, or?
I mean, I know Chris, he's, he is chairman of the, he's chair of the commerce board. Yeah, so I don't, I certainly don't have a, I know, I know Chris, he's actually was my son's baseball coach last year, too. So I think he'll do a fine job on the state JCPA. I'll just, I feel comfortable with it. I'll move a motion to appoint Chris Puller to the board, to the JCPA board as his representative.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Whose cares? Next I have appointments to the farmland protection board, two for your terms.
Yeah, the, there's a non-farmer or public representative. We have an applicant, I think, that just got on the guest this morning. I don't even know how to say his last name correctly. Eric Vaughn? And then another slot is for conservation district representative. Mr. Banks in that. Any online or not?
I was hoping to help Mr. Barrett sit online, but I'm not sure if he's, he's able to. He's here versus. He's online? Okay, great.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Derek here?
And then, and then, okay, so that's where.
Mr. Bird, so, okay.
Derek here?
Yes, this is Dane Tapp from the, one of the commissioners, and I'm on the farmland protection board. We received your applications this morning. Can you tell me on a, I know you've seen loss of development in North Carolina and loss of farmland. Can you bring that perspective to the board? What else would you bring to our board? We're a volunteer board. We need lots of help.
Um, well, yeah, just a quick point of correction. I'm from Northern California and in the eighties, as you know, the Sacramento area, when I own Lake Tahoe, just had a huge building boom, and we lost pretty much all the ranch land that was there as I was growing up. So I'm, I have firsthand a major shift like that, major suburban sprawl happening. I'm a retired coast guard officer. I served 22 years in the coast guard. So I've, I've got lots of experience in bureaucracy. And I'm also a small business owner here in Jefferson County, and I have a lot of ties to the community. I know pretty much, if there's any sort of need, I know, you know, who to call to, to figure out how to meet that need. So that, I think that would be of significant benefit to the board as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything from other commissioners? And was Mr. Banks online?
I'm like a train.
All right, thank you.
Well, I can speak to Mr. Banks. Longtime farmer in the area. Does a, he does an excellent job on his farmland, and I think he would be a good representative on, on the board. He doesn't suffer fools. He's a pretty serious guy at times, and I think that's what we need when we're looking at these applications and making sure everything's on correct. I think Mr. Banks would be a good applicant in the conservation district.
What about, we, so we have two positions. One is conservation district.
Right.
And one is a non-farmer.
That's correct.
And is Eric, is he a non-farmer?
That's correct. Yeah. I'll go ahead and make the motion. I made that we appoint Eric Burnt as the non-farmer public representative on the farmland protection board and Neil Banks as the conservation district representative on the farmland protection board.
I'll second that.
All right, so the move in seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Whose cares?
You said Neil Banks is a ten day banker.
Well, he.
Does he go by Tennessee?
I guess that's his official name.
Okay, okay.
T. Neil Banks. I know him as Neil.
I do, yeah, okay. There you go.
I'm sorry. He is quite efficient.
Next I have is agenda number five, Ms. Liz Willard.
Morning.
Morning.
No microphone.
The big shift somehow.
Oh, we're all wired in now? Okay. So good morning.
However it works.
Yeah. We're hoping to improve it, so, yes. Well, thank you for making time for me this morning. I'm here before you to request your approval of the funding for two conservation easements that we have been working on. One is the Brown property, which is the easement, about 311 acres. Brown family, you may, you may have read the article in The Spirit about Tim and Stacy Brown mentoring a young boy who is also deaf. They are, they are a deaf couple, managing a very large farm very successfully. And that farm has 90% prime and important soils, which is the qualifying, the main qualifying factor for, for the easements that we consider is the quality of the soils and productivity of the, of the farm. So they actually scored the top of the list when, when they applied. So I'm very happy to have them come in and, and apply for a voluntary easement. The second property is what we call a Hendrix property, and that is on Ridge Road. It actually butts Twin Ridge Orchard, which has been in the program since 2006, I believe. Well, we, we've done several easements with Twin Ridge, and they have butted the Twin Ridge Orchard property. So that's creating a nice cluster, which is another objective that we have is to cluster the protected land, you know, as, as applications come in. So, so that is a, also a very productive property. And somewhat smaller, it's 142 acres. It also houses half of the Vortex aerial tower, which is a navigation tower for planes coming to Dulles. So that's not in our easement, but it is actually protected. Because part of the requirements of the Vortex easement is that it, there can't be any, any structures or anything obstructing the, the tower. So that's been farmed as well. Both of these easements have a substantial donation component. In the case of the Browns, it's quite substantial. They donated $400,000 of easement value. And because of a grant from the West Virginia Agricultural Land Protection Authority, the board is obtaining this easement for $110,000, which is an amazing use of our funds for such a big property. And as well, the Hendrix easement is donating $123,000 in easement value. So those are, in, in my mind, that leaves extra money for us to apply to other properties. And then with these two properties being added, we'll have almost 6,100 acres of land under easement in the county since our first easement in 2004. So that brings us up to over 6,000 acres. I have another three in the hover, totaling about 400 acres. And then I have three more applications coming in, so we're, you know, we have a lot, a lot of interest and a lot of support for this.
And I gave you a map showing where all these things are. Yeah.
I don't have any questions, I thank you for, for all the work you do, I know this is a great program. We have to move motion to accept these. They, I'll move that the Jefferson County Commission approved the purchase by the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board for the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Program, one conservation easement on the property, Jefferson County, John C. Hendricks property 2020-03.
That's just our code.
Oh, that's your code, you don't need that, okay. November, what, that was on there, okay.
Second.
The move and seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so that's one property.
I just scrolled through the, the next one. I also move that the Jefferson County Commission approved the purchase by the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board for the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Program, one conservation easement on the property of Jefferson County owned by the Brown family trust, dash 219, 219, excuse me.
Second.
The move and seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Well, and I just want to make a final comment, you can see by sort of the, the dates on each of these properties, does take time to work through this easement process and deal with the federal folks and all that and and through the board process, but then also that each app property has also donated a portion of the value and that's, you know, just wonderful that these folks believe so much in the process of putting an easement on their farmland that they're, you know, they enter negotiations and they also donate back to the county. There's no way to repay them. They've done something priceless.
Yeah, I would say overall, 40% of the easement value of all our easements has been donated, which is a lot. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, item number six. We're about 20 minutes early, so.
Okay, yes, here I am. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for allowing me to come and personally invite you all to attend a start of what will be community meetings throughout this year on the subject of affordable housing. To give you a little bit of background here, I am the Director of the Family Resource Network of the Panhandle. I cover Jefferson, Morgan, and Berkeley Counties. I am a Jefferson County resident, longtime resident, and have worked in the social work field for about 11 years now. And one big thing that, you know, we all as social workers or as providers of services in the, in the community know is that we can't do things on our own. We can't solve issues, problems, or address things that are going on in our community on our own. We need to partner with everyone. So I'm inviting you to come and start a partnership with us in establishing conversations and education advocacy to begin with in our community about the issue of affordable housing. And one of the big things is, you know, first off, we're going to have to talk about what is the definition of affordable housing? Now, each, each county is going to have to work out and develop their own plan unique to their needs and to the opportunities and things in the county. So our local United Way is also 100% on board and will also be conducting things with particularly businesses and other entities in the area to find out and to develop some type of strategy for the future of affordable housing in our area. On Friday, September 9th, we are happy to have two presenters who are from West Virginia. I oftentimes hear things from people that, oh, these are great ideas, but all these things won't work in West Virginia. Well, we found some things that do work in West Virginia. We have David Eads, who is from the Extension Agency and he has done a great deal of data collection on affordable housing and needs and things along those lines. So he has the science. And then we also have Kate. She is a former Director of the Randolph County Housing Authority and she took the data that David had and began to work on things organizing, like we are trying to do, partnerships involving the whole community and was able to organize some successful programs in that county for, to address affordable housing. So I have, yes. I believe I have all of your emails. So you should be receiving a invitation, if you have not already, with a Zoom link. If you have not, or will not, haven't, if you don't get one, that's what I'm trying to say here. My email address is director at F as in Frank, R as in Ray, N as in Nancy, O as in Oscar, T as in Tom, P as in Paul.org. And I will, after this, this September 9th meeting, I am going to be meeting with other individuals and asking people who are interested to contact me about listening sessions, focus groups, that type of information gathering from the community. Because all that is important to, to know, we need to hear what it is that people believe to be the, the barriers, what ideas people have about overcoming them. And I will also say, I am extremely happy to be living in Jefferson County because of your vision. Okay, you, I've read your, your plans, you have set aside areas for development. You actively seek to engage in farmland protection. Okay, these, these actions show forward thinking and, and awareness of, of needs of the county and I look forward to engaging with you all in the future on affordable housing. Thank you very much. Oh, any questions?
Yeah, I have one, what, what time on the ninth, do you have a time yet?
Yes, 9:00 AM.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next definitely agenda is item number seven, Laurel Zaminsky. Then you guys will be number eight. Yes, and I can heat it up, okay, if you're allowed. Yeah. Two weeks ago, when I came before you to present my six-month evaluation in open session, my goal is to outline all my accomplishments and review with you my goals for the next six to 12 months. The impetus for doing this in open session is to offer transparency and objectivity to my role as your county administrator. No time did I allude to or place on the agenda any indication I was seeking a probationary notice, just wanted to clear. Commissioner Stoffler brought a motion to the floor and discussed that since no agenda item existed, it would need to be revisited at the next meeting. And this is in fact held it up on today's agenda. Furthermore, in these situations, it has been customary that the county finance director would introduce this simply to inform the Commissioners of what the budget impact would look like. The entire incident has caused a flurry of social media attacks, and I voted myself and Ms. Gordon. We endure comments like pencil pushing county administrator, what exactly does Missel do? Greasing each other's pockets of taxpayer money? Who is this finance director and why does this appear to be running our county with the county administrator? This bus there, we are all getting screwed. And now nowhere else does a subordinate put in for a boss's raise. I could get on, I could go on, but I think you can suggest what is transpiring here. Referencing a potential raise against the K-9 program funding request that was brought forth twice during the budget process seems a little out of context. I think what is most disturbing was that several of these posts were done by elected official employees. The simple gesture by Commissioner Stoffler is greatly appreciated and I would like to recognize him for that. Thank you. I've always maintained a position of civility and honesty in my 30 years of public service and don't subscribe to bullying of any type, and that includes cyberbullying. I want to express my apologies to the Commissioners and Ms. Gordon, who are on the receiving end of these egregious social media posts and emails. It's not fair. Singling out standards is especially hurtful and demoralizing to a playground. That's critical. Due to your motion and move to ward me with a six-month probationary notice, I will respectfully decline. Because I am not carrying, and I, I will respectfully decline not because I'm carrying to the bully targets, but because I never intended nor did I ever expect any kind of compensation. And with that, I will deal with you. Thank you.
Well, I just want to make one comment about the bullying. I absolutely agree with your comments on the bullying. I have witnessed some of these behaviors amongst the Commission and it has been very disturbed by. We as Commissioners are role model, role models for this community. If there are concerns about county business, we should be able to work through those in a positive and professional manner. Perhaps this might even be a good time to seek out some type of training, harassment in the workforce. I know that you have an open door policy and I know Ms. Gordon has an open door policy. And if there's ever any issues that come up, we can certainly come in and talk to you anytime. We can bring it to this meeting and we can discuss it and vote on it. So just want to add that a little bit. This, this bullying needs to stop. It's unfair for our employees and it's unfair to the county.
Well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Nessel. You're taking the high road and I appreciate that and I appreciate all our employees have had to endure, yet perform their jobs professionally. It's a sad situation where we are as a community. But that's all, that's all for now.
Anything else from other Commissioners? If there is nothing, I'll say there's no action on the agenda and we can move on. Next I have is item number 10, under Old Business, discussion of permitting approvals for a West Virginia farm marshal. Okay. Well, then if Mrs. Zaminsky's not online yet, that'll be Nathan, who's the only thing I have left on the agenda.
The only thing.
Gotcha, and that's fine with me if we all have a time, if you guys can go ahead and say that.
Yeah, that's all she wanted to ask.
Yeah, that's.
I think it makes sense because it sounds, you know, it's a complicated matter, I need to understand, really understand.
We couldn't hear this.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Our office can reach out and go ahead and special, and schedule that in. And we'll let, we'll run some dates by you, make sure you call them.
Yeah.
And we would, we encourage Ms. Zaminsky to, to come in person.
Yes, yeah.
So we're not in a tin can.
Yeah. Well, and especially if there's, you know, more information for the TIF that, you know, we need to see the documents or, you know, all that good stuff in front of us while we're talking about.
Crazy, so Nathan, is there anything we can talk about in open session? Is there anything we?
I have to give you some legal advice regarding point number A related to the various solar cases. And I did want to just do that in executive session. Beyond that, I'm not ready.
Well, I'm moving going to executive session to receive legal counsel for item number nine, A, which I believe is concerning solar.
And also 9D, I do have one.
Okay, and 9D, which is a human rights case.
The move and seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are in executive session.
Proposed, we are in executive session.
Uh, move we come back into regular session?
Second.
It's been moving second is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is fair and say aye.
Aye.
Host, which carries Rebecca regular session.
Commissioner Hudson, could I just note for the record that Commissioner Stalfer, Ricky himself had left room from all issues related to solar.
Absolutely. Um, is there anything else to come for the commission this morning?
Uh, just one, I just want to just point, uh, I just wanted to introduce actually Steve Allen, Director of Homeland Security, would you like to come forward with their new public information dossier and make an objection? We just, we just swore her in today for kind of sort of talk, so I just wanted you to put name to the face.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. It's nice to meet all of y'all.
Nice to meet you.
So, uh, we're, we're excited to get her started. We've got a lot of things to push in her brain with, with different things, although she's already got mad or, um, bachelor's degrees and, and working toward her masters, um, with Homeland Security as well. So she's already got a lot of things and matter of fact, as we were speaking earlier today, she says, yeah, I studied this like local emergency planning committees and things of that nature. So, um, it, it won't be the uphill struggle that has been in the past with, uh, people coming in as administrative assistant, PIOs and volunteer coordinators. But I think she's going to fit in with this really great, and I thank you all for approving her a couple of weeks ago. But Jennifer, and then do you have anything to say?
I just want to say thank you so much for approving me. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Is there anything else this morning session? Well, hearing none, if there's no objection, we are reset into one.
I got one o'clock. I'll go ahead and call us to order. Thanks for everyone come back this afternoon for our discussion. Michelle, John, one of y'all want to lead us off first?
So before we get started, I wanted to point you to the handout that I gave today. I had the updated schedule. We didn't have one person reschedule for one o'clock. So I moved Shepherdstown So I moved Shepherdstown Corporation to 3pm. And then I had one additional request that we received last night from the Jefferson County Care Association. And that one is also scheduled for 3pm, and that is in your packet. When we get to Shepherdstown's request, they did send us blueprints or plans for their particular requests. It's our 45, it's 235, or 230. Today, requests that we have received on the third page of the second handout. Total 32.1 million dollars. We have adjustments of about 9.2 million for either cancellations, withdrawals, or reductions in their requests. To make the total adjusted requests of 22.9 million dollars. Amounts day to date are 4.9 million, total is 18.1 million. So ARPA funding that we received was 11.1 million. We have interest earned of about 25,000, less our 5.4 million that we have in committed funds. The committed funds represents amounts that we have already approved but not yet spent. And then less our actual operating expenditures of 4.9 million leaves us a total balance to be allocated of 795,000. We have a pretty full schedule today to get through all of the remaining requests that we received. And it's really nice to hear the presentations today. We may need to schedule some time at the end to actually schedule a date for review. To make decisions as far as what we're going to approve and what we're going to deny. We may make some decisions today, but I think the decisions are going to be made at a later date. And then I wanted to kind of turn it over to John so he can give you an update on the homeless support position that had been requested.
So we had, at the last meeting, we had a request in St. Charles Town for the homeless support. We did some research. Apparently there was a draft, the report on Mayor Select Committee on Homelessness, I've read through that. We're starting to put some numbers together with that as well, on what that program would look like in the out years. That was one of my big concerns, we get a one-time ARPA spend. But we've got to fund that in the out years, that's critical for us. I want to make sure we have the capacity to do that. Also, to be buying from the other municipalities in Jefferson County, what is that dollar amount going to look like? We've not approached anyone on that as of yet. So we're kind of working through that, so when we come back and revisit that, we'll have some more concrete numbers. We'll have some plan moving forward. We also have a draft copy of the job description to that position as well. I think one of the big decisions that we're going to be, you all are going to need to make. We're going to recommend is where does this position sit? Because it's funded through the county, but it has to sit in the county. I think at the last meeting I advocated for perhaps putting this under the community ministries. Because I think perhaps that might be the best organization to package this position under. Because they sort of are in the liaison for a lot of the stuff going on. I did have just a short discussion with the director over there about this last week. And I said, yeah, we're looking at this, and I wanted to get with him some point in time in the next couple of weeks to sort of just get some ideas of what his thoughts are on this as well. I just wanted to kind of bring that back to you, letting you know we are looking at this. But my big concern is, I fully support this program. I think it's admirable, I think it's needed, it's warranted by reading, by reading the report. There's a lot of good cause in here for this position to exist. My only angst is funding any out. You know, if we come to you with a bunch of requests, one or two goes down the road and say, we need X more dollars. I don't want the program to go away. We start all this, we get down the road, and all of a sudden, it has to get de-funded. Because we didn't think how far enough, how we're going to keep this thing going. So my only angst about that, and we're going to, we'll come back to you with some numbers. Because a whole work program has to be developed around this. It's just not a position, it's mailings and materials and, you know, PR pieces and the whole lot of yours. So just wanted to bring you up to date on that.
All right, so the first item that we have on the agenda today is ARPA 25. Roger is out of town today on vacation, so we will just kind of go over this briefly. This is a project that we've had in the Capital Outlay Fund for a number of years. It's demolition of this smooth building in the downtown, right, a couple of houses down from us on Washington Street here. They had originally thought we could get some grant funding from Charleston City. They applied for a grant to demo that building and correct the stormwater runoff on the streets behind here. It'll prevent flooding and prevent rainwater runoff into the watershed. I'm not sure that that has materialized, and if it does, I believe we would still be responsible for demolition of this building. The original amount that was approved in the Capital Outlay Fund was only 25,000 dollars. That was a number of years ago, cost increased. So he's requesting 100,000 dollars for demolition of the smooth building, it's a flooded building, and it's condemned. It is vacant at this time, and we'll open that up to any questions that you may have regarding that project.
I already said one thing, that one of the reasons why the cost is escalating so much is because the cost of any kind of construction right now is all through the roof. A lot of abating has to be done with that building, especially the abating, sometimes that really dries up the cost. So, and then deciding the stormwater management around that could be pretty arduous. Because from what I understand is that water moves past that building and floods the back part. So I think they're trying to treat some of that water before it gets there. And this would also add some green space in downtown Charleston. Add green space, it's always nice.
And I believe that's part of the Capital Outlay Project, he already has historical determination about it, and it's not a historical setback. The next item on the agenda is for 115, we have City of Ransson, Stephanie Grove as the city manager. And we care facts medical access group, ARPA 42.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present today, I appreciate your time. Also, I want to point out that we have Councilwoman Schrau, who'd be here today, who has taken an interest in the ARPA funds generally. But is also here representing the city of Ransson. I appear before you today on behalf of Ransson, but the project that I'm presenting to you is really a project for the county, because it benefits the county. This is the long-awaited Fairfax extension. So you probably know from Charleston through, there was that one remaining piece to connect there behind Chick-fil-A. To connect the entire thing. The property owner went into bankruptcy, and that, that project stalled for some time. Project has been running now, unfortunately, as Mr. Missell said, the construction costs escalated. And it's about 2.5 million to finish that piece. You will see a roundabout here in this graphic, that roundabout was not constructed because it added to the cost. So if that roundabout, there's no order there, it's just a straight through. So the project that I'm presenting to you is an 1100-foot missing section of Fairfax Boulevard. And a 600-foot extension of 16th Avenue. And what this does is it avoids all of the railroad tracks to Jefferson Medical Center, Valley Health. And you can tell this is an old graphic because it says ambulance authority, but the Jefferson County ESA. So it connects over half of the county's population. It connects the Briar Run subdivision that's in the county to Jefferson Medical Center. I did have a conversation with, with leadership from a hospital, they are excited about this project, the completion of it. Because they indicated that there were times where they'd call a doctor and maybe 10 or 15 minutes away. And then they would get stuck in the wheelchair. And so it does create a hindrance to them in the provision of medical services. So really, anybody who uses Jefferson Medical Center benefits from this. The other thing of interest, I believe, to the county is that it creates, it makes the ESA building a potential point of service delivery for EMS services. Currently, I don't think that that, with, with the railroad tracks there, it's, it's, it's an impedance to service delivery. And I know that the county commission pays 81,000 dollars a month, or per year, in mortgage for that building. And has been doing so for several years. So I'm aware that you only have 800,000 dollars left, and I asked for 2 million. But I'm here to tell you, I'll take whatever I can get. And I'd also like to pitch the case that we could come in under the EMS portion that you've set aside for the reorganization of EMS, if you decide to make this station, if you decide to make this a point of service delivery for, for medical services. For reducing medical services. You may recall on July 2nd, so we just had a, an example of what happens when a train gets stuck. On July 2nd, there was a train stuck on the tracks at Mildred Street all day, and people could not get through. This reduces the response time for on-call staff at the Jefferson Medical Center. And again, it reduces the response time from the ESA building. And again, this is something that benefits the county itself. It's not just a city project. We have lots of projects that are just city projects, this isn't one of them. It is under construction, actually, the blacktop is down. So we're looking at mid to late October for the completion of this project. But again, there was a 2.5 million dollars, the 2.5 million dollar number was not budgeted by the city of Ransson. We will find the funds to cover that because it is an important project. But I thought I would come to you and request the ARPA funding, using the link for the medical services, which I think is important to the hospital, Valley Health that's out there behind, by Panera, as well as the ESA building. Because it removes those train tracks as, as an impedance to service delivery. And a little, just a little guideline there is that section we're talking about. So that's my pitch for the city of Ransson, and really for a county project to connect our residents, both county and city, to the medical centers that we have. The only, as you're aware, the only medical center we have is here, is in the city of Ransson. I believe that that will remain the location of that hospital. I've spoken, again, with the hospital leadership, they intend to stay in that location. And you're actually, there's some plans for extension, I believe, in that location. And then finally, there is potentially a plan for assisted living out behind the Chick-fil-A. There's some property owners who have explored an assisted living opportunity there. So again, that's another connection to medical services, using the Fairfax connector, that, that final piece. To finally get it open all the way to Charleston, all the way out to the, to Rockland.
Have you applied for any grant funding?
So this, this entire project, we've invested over 20 million dollars. It began with a tiger grant from, from the federal government, it is one of two like it in the country. So it, it represents a 20 million dollar investment. So there, we have received grants from the federal government, from the state. We have not applied for a grant for this last section, I do not believe. It's possible it happened before I came here, but I'm not, I'm not aware that we have, so.
Will the, is the community okay with like through traffic and stuff? Will there be any issue, like an HOA?
They already kind of have that through traffic, yes. It was, it was always intended to be through traffic, those are, that is a city street, it's not an HOA street. The city maintains that, that street there in Fairfax, I think that's what you're talking about. So they already get that traffic anyway, from people who go around the circle and go the old way by the ESA building. I go that way myself in the mornings, so they're already used to it. But the, it'll actually prevent, if you look, these people on the sides are really the ones who complain about it. Because people turn here and go around. So it'll actually use that main thoroughfare, which is much larger than the side streets that people are using right now.
I just wanted to make sure there wouldn't be a future issue.
Yeah, but that is, like I said, that is a city maintaining street right now.
And it's more of a boulevard.
It has, yeah, three. Yes, it has parking on both sides.
Anything else from other commissioners?
Thank you so much. The next on the agenda is ARPA 15, African American Community Association of Jefferson County. Jackie Vaughn, looking for lost revenue and a part-time person.
I'm not sure, but we're fully familiar with Fisherman Hall, which is located on West End. It was a building that was originally done back in the 1985. It was a building as a community business center for African Americans, for education, as well as for different businesses and architecture. And businesses as well. In fact, I wanted to show you a picture, because this right here is what Fisherman Hall on the left looked like back in 1994. When they originally planned to tear it down, the city. People came together, and actually, this is where the board got formed. They actually preserved Fisherman Hall. And the picture on the right, this one, is what it looks like today. With grants from both the federal government and West Virginia, a lot of different places, over half a million dollars, it was completely restored. And so it's actually now back as a community center that's being used by the city of Charleston, different places in the area. It's being used for meeting places, for Bible studies, it's being used for exercises that we're giving free for local people. We're using health, different things, we're working with happy retreat, to do different presentations about historical things in the town. It's being used a lot of time. When the lodge was, had a problem with their chimney and was shut down for a while, that's where they came to have the meetings. So it's been, I won't say a heart of our community, but it's one of our few community centers that we have in this area. It's very important. Most of our revenue in the past had been done for people who used it. We had a lot of labor unions, the city of Charleston itself, a lot of places used the town and provided donations to help keep it running. Unfortunately, when we got hit with COVID, everything just came to a speech and halt. And we ran to this issue. On top of that, of course, our bills kept coming. So currently, our utility bills for electrical is around 300 to 400 a month. We're on this special rate that somehow we've been gotten onto with electrical. And doesn't matter whether we use it or not, it seems to be still 300 or 400 dollars a month. We've been taking on cleaning services, what we used to do ourselves. Now that because of COVID, we've actually hired professionals to come in and actually do cleans. At least once a month, come out twice a month, just to make sure we have a safe environment for everyone to use. Unfortunately, we've lost a lot of volunteers as well, people that you've been involved in a lot of things, you know. Because people with COVID and different things, a lot of that has stopped as well. And so, and plus on top of that, some of our key people have been sick, and no longer can function and help us. So we, one of the reasons we needed a person is a part-time, that we no longer have those resources that we had before, prior to COVID. And even though we're starting to get better, most people are still using Zoom rather than actually coming in and maintaining person. So we still haven't really been getting back to the place we were prior to COVID. We work with different grants, and we've gotten donations, but we're still struggling to kind of keep, you know, the lights on and everything working. And still be that place for the community. We recently got opened up new solar, it's been donated panels. So we're looking at doing ways to kind of help us and go green. We want to use it as an educational source as well, to show the, you know, different schools and kids how to actually start to go green. We're looking at getting batteries, we've looked at a grant to do that, to actually bring it so that, if we have power shortages in the area, we can still have a medical base for fishery, to provide insulin and different things that people may need. As well as to be able to charge simple things like their cell phones and devices. So there's a lot going on in Fisherman Hall, but we have a lot to do. And we still are falling short for our resources to be able to carry out all the things we need to do. We also have some other interesting things happening during COVID. We have pipers. So in the bottom of Fisherman Hall, we actually have an archive of African American history. And with the pipe that burst in the summertime, we have a little foot of war. And so we damaged some of our historical doors and things of that nature. As well as some of the food that we feed the homeless was destroyed out as well. And so we damaged some of our historical doors and things of that nature, as well as some of the food that we feed homeless was being stored out as well. We also feed the homeless every third Saturday of the month. So that's another really effort that we work with from Fisherman Hall. It's really important that we kind of keep this thing going. A lot of work is done in Fisherman Hall and we really want to make sure that we don't reduce the community structure because it means a lot. We actually was awarded a West Virginia Historical Award for the preservation that was done for Fishman Hall. So we also have a higher elevation as well. So are there any questions in respect to things?
For the commission, I just wanted to break out that they're asking for twenty thousand for lost revenue and fifteen thousand for part-time help for building. I think it was for the building, is that right?
Yes.
The building manager? No questions, I think you're married to the ground.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
The next person that we have on the agenda is ARPA twenty-six and thirty-five, Charles Town, West Truck Traffic Chaplaincy. I actually did not hear back from them and their email bounced back is undeliverable. So I'll just go over their request real quick. ARPA twenty-six, they're asking for ten thousand dollars for lost revenue to help let's see, the part-time chaplain deals with family support, crisis management, substance abuse, anger management issues. He works closely with stewards, racing officials, enforcement and jockeys who are foul of the rules. These folks can many times keep their license due to the, to enter the grounds as long as they're working with the chaplains. That first request was ten thousand dollars. They've been unable to conduct fundraising activities for the last couple of years as a result of COVID for that lost revenue. The second high class is ARPA thirty-five. They asked for twenty-four thousand for eighty-eight is additionally for decreased revenues. So request for more revenue is thirty-four thousand for eighty-eight. And it's pretty much the same descriptions that we had for the first request. They've just increased it by literally twenty-four thousand for eighty-eight.
So they increased it or the twenty-four thousand includes the original ten thousand?
To me, they they submitted two requests.
Okay, all right.
Just want to make sure I understand. The next request is ARPA twenty-two, State Paper Child Advocacy Center, Amy Easterball. Is she here online? She indicated she would be here. She said she would be here, so can we come back to that one? Next is ARPA seventeen, West Virginia Therabred Breeders Association, John Funkhauser. Very well, okay. I'm happy to know that one. That's where early, ARPA thirty-six, Charles Washington Symphony Orchestra Corporation. And they are here.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present today for your time and consideration. We had a prepared statement, that's what's being chucked out to you. If you can just kind of paraphrase a little bit. My name is, my name is Amy Pederhita, the treasurer of the Charles Washington Symphony Orchestra. This is Kim Croft, she's our president. We've been in existence about ten years now. And we are founded by local and community members. Our our orchestra provides a unique opportunity for local musicians. We have youth members who are still in school. We provide mentorship and musical education. We have adults who haven't picked up a horn in twenty-five years, I'm one of them. And it's a great way to get back into something that you love when you're younger. It's an opportunity for the community to come together. We hire professional musicians to fill the holes. So like, we don't have a bassoon player, so we hire a bassoon player, for instance. So that's where a lot of our concert expense comes from. We have all volunteer board members, nobody takes a salary. And the money that we raise is used to put on concerts. Those concerts are, have always been free to the public, people charge tickets. We are a true community orchestra. We present annual concerts, three to four a year. We have played in churches and halls and historic homes and in the streets. And most recently, we opened the Shepherdstown Street Fest. And over the years, we opened Happy Retreat with a dedication, the hundredth birthday of the National Park Service in Harpers Ferry. We christened Charles Washington Hall with its first ever concert. And the amp with the fireworks concert. So we we've kind of been all the way over the county. Unfortunately, when COVID happened, and especially prior to vaccinations, we had to close down because you can't play a mask while you're practicing an instrument. So it wasn't safe, it was a hard stretch. We came together one summer just to keep playing, just to keep our membership talking. And we're just in a horse barn because it was outdoors and it had a roof and it was warm, so it was summertime, so we could do that. But the suspension of our activities has been really hard. Our income, which comes in through concerts and donations and some small grants, was cordoned. Our only revenue stream for much of the pandemic was online donations. We reached out through Facebook fundraisers and such. So we had to proverbially close our doors, but we had expenses that kept going. You know, we had music licensing, the website, we wanted to keep rolling. We have a post office box that costs us money. And our expenses and our budget isn't large, but it was it was quite a bit for us. We did end up opening our summer season this year at the Street Fest, which we were glad that we were able to do. It was really, really good to be out playing again and we were well received. Going forward, we have one, we have plans to do a December concert with the Berkeley Community Corps. They've asked us to join with them because we're both celebrating our ten-year anniversaries. So that's something that we look forward to do. We may do a haunted symphony again, which is usually around Halloween, but we haven't quite worked out all the details because two concerts pretty close together. So we're not professionals, so we have to practice. All righty, so I want to paint you a picture of our finances, just to give you a feel for where we are. Prior to the COVID, prior to our June performance in Shepherdstown, we had just shy of twenty-five hundred dollars in our bank account. And that was a pretty rich month, actually. We brought in almost a thousand dollars from the Street Fest, but we spent sixteen hundred and twenty dollars. That money is spent to hire the musicians to fill the holes, advise music.
And rehearsal space and concert space and pull out of friends.
Yes, plus there's music licensing at the locally friends at ASCAP, whether they play or not. So our request is for ten thousand dollars. It may not seem a lot to you guys, but it's a whole lot for us. And we want to use that money to reestablish ourselves. Some of the membership fell away because we weren't rehearsing. And there, some of them are able to make money other places, so they recommit themselves. That's the nature of the gig we're on. This allows us also to do fundraising because you need money to make money, right? We can't even have a dinner and sell tickets to it if we don't have money to buy the food for the fundraiser. So our bank account right now is one thousand thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. I do honestly feel like we've exhausted pretty much all the begging we can do for our membership and from our online family and friends. So that's where we are right now. This is our first time coming to a government body for any kind of assistance. And we don't want to keep coming back. We'd like to get self-sufficient again, but we could use a little help because COVID hurt us badly. I'd like to finish, if I have time, to read a letter from Craig Swain, who was a member of our orchestra as a youth. To whom it may concern, my name is Craig Swain. I'm a third-year undergraduate student in clarinet performance at the University of Michigan School of Music, Theatre and Dance. I was a member of CWSO from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. And I still think back to my time there is extremely paramount of my musical development as well as for my social skills, working with musicians among the community. I had first heard about the group when I came to see them. And as a young musician, a young music student in a small town, I was astounded seeing other musicians my age playing with adults. When I first joined my eighth grade year, I was a relatively, I was relatively new to the clarinet and it was the first experience I had playing with an orchestra ever. The first concert in which I was part of was titled Rare Masterworks. It was a program that featured some amazingly beautiful yet obscure pieces from the classical and romantic eras. It was a very new experience for me, but it fostered my soon-to-be love for playing orchestra or for orchestral playing. And it instantly exposed me to the to the diverse classical repertoire. Despite the large age differences in the ensemble, I felt throughout my years, there was a strong sense of community and friendship. And I always felt so welcomed and supported by the fellow musicians. The events and performances put on by the orchestra seemed to have beautiful lasting impact on the listeners. And I always saw other inspired children like myself earnestly peering from the audience. My experience in CWSO also taught me important practical skills that would carry on through my endeavors, endeavors at Interlochen Arts Academy and eventually the University of Michigan. I learned about being punctual to rehearsals and concerts, playing within a woodwind section, strengthening intonation and musicality, following an orchestral conductor and musicians etiquette, community building and growing my self-esteem as a performer. I continue to draw from those experiences and lessons whenever I perform. I will forever be thankful of my time in the Charles Washington Symphony Orchestra. It truly need not falter in a time of increased anxiety in the post-pandemic phase we are all living through. It needs unbridled support from the community and the county government in order to maintain its immensely positive impact around the region. It has become so much more than an orchestra. And my only hope is that through this grant, it will continue to reach more and more inspired children as I once was. That's who we are. That's that's what we wanted to do to start with. And we're very proud of Craig and of, gosh.
It always makes me care of
many other musicians that we've raised up. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious between your volunteer musicians and you said you had to hire some to fill in the hole. What's the, I'm just curious, what's the portion or does it depend on the piece?
It depends on, yeah, it depends on the pieces. This last concert, we had eight.
Out of how many?
Out of forty.
Okay, all right, that gives me an idea of how many.
But that was a big concert, right?
So your concerts used to fill in.
Right, right. Now, I just wanted to have an idea.
Right, yeah, and and bigger pieces of music. There's full symphonies and then there's miniature things too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We had a couple people walk in, West Virginia Therabred Breeders Association, John Funkhauser. He is ARPA seventeen.
Good afternoon, President Hudson, Vice President Solomon.
I'm below you. But there we go.
Commissioners, Bob Jackson and Montez. I'm Mary Sell and this is John Funkhauser, President of West Virginia Therabred Breeders Association and owner of, operator, manager of Sullivan Farms. And we thank you for your time and your service here today, so.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. I'm the president of the West Virginia Therabred Breeders Association. And we are asking for fifteen thousand a year for our annual horse show, which is, you know, helps promote the industry and helps our breeders, kind of gives back a little bit to the breeders. We, you know, we had a great show. We've really come a long way in the last like three years in making this a bigger, better, more prominent event. You know, we are, some of our other neighboring states have a much bigger year-long show that is very lucrative for breeders. And COVID really, really hurt the breeders and the owners in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. As you may or may not know, the racetrack shut down completely for a couple of months. We were unsure when they were going to ever open, if they were going to ever open again. You know, because of that, I think, you know, a lot of our breeders, they get their owners' awards and and breeders' awards through the Therabred Development Fund, which is usually about ten percent of what a horse makes in the first quarters, second quarter of twenty twenty. We were down to a quarter of a percent, which was a huge impact to breeders. As you know, this industry, it takes a lot of money to to keep these horses going. And there was a lot of breeders that really didn't know, you know, where we were going to go, you know, how they were going to get their money, how they were going to continue to pay for these these things. And and it really, really impacted a lot of breeders. And so, you know, the the numbers have been slowly declining over the years. And I think this really incentivized breeders, current breeders and future breeders to 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 basically start breeding again and continue to breeding. And and that's kind of why we're here today. You know, it is, these these horses are a long-term investment, you know. The decisions you make today, they won't pay out for four, five, six years down the road. And as you know, the, there are so many people involved when, you know, when the breeders get money, it's right back in the community, right? Through the employees, through the feed stores, the veterinary services, the fairers, the exercise riders' rooms. I mean, it goes on and on and on. I mean, everything that we generate, we put right back into the community. And as this money would do so as well. And so we were looking, you know, you know, to to basically kind of ramp up this 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 show a little bit. You know, this is our fair, this is the best, you know, West Virginia breads out there. You may or may not know, last Friday, a West Virginia bread ran second in the West, the one, not a West Virginia bread classic, or not West Virginia bread classic, sorry, the Charles Town classic, which was, which was absolutely huge. I mean, you know, we are breeding a better horse. And we want to continue to incentivize breeders to to take that leap, that leap of faith and to continue to invest into this industry, which is so vital to this this county, you know. And so a lot of what we do in the in the horse show is a great representative of kind of, you know, the the horses out there. We also have an event directly after the horse show, which all the proceeds goes to Saddles and Smiles, you know, which is, you know, therapeutic riding, you know, benefit. And so, you know, it's a, it's very integral that that we kind of, you know, incentivize these breeders to to continue breeding or else, you know, the future looks pretty grim otherwise.
I think the the show is October sixteenth, so it's important that we we were marketing it. So it's important this year that we at least move forward and know what the prize money is. We also this year would like to incentivize entries. So we're we're going to give an entry incentive, entry fees to cover. entry fees to cover, that's like a hundred dollars per horse. That covers a groom. We could bring a mare and a foal. It's two people right there. The gas. And our breeders are under a lot of inflationary pressures right now. And again, as John said, we are really against other breeding shows. We do market this on our Facebook page. We'd like this to be an agriculture tourism event as well. We had people come and have owners be incentivized. And remember that all of the racing and the agriculture starts with a breeder. It starts here with the breeders, and we cannot flatline or go down. We need to be competitive. And this, our books are audited. We would, and this would also allow us to give prize money through the eight classes. Right now, we're only giving prize money through, I think, the first three or four. This would give prize money further down. And the money goes to this community. It stays in this community. It incents, and it's a multiplier in agriculture. And we just, we'd love to have your support.
I know a lot about dairy shows, and I don't know much about a breeding showcase for horses. So explain to me how that works, what type of classes, that is one age?
Yes. Other, other states just have their own yearling shows. And the West Virginia Breeders, we've always done kind of three classes. One, the mare class. That way, anybody can kind of bring their mare. A lot of people, you know, might not have their yearling brayed or, you know, handled, so they can bring a mare. And then the yearling class, which is, you know, we split it up into fillies and colts, and then we do the best of the yearlings, and then as well as the foals or weanling class. And then the overall, the grand champion is chosen between the foals and the yearlings. We leave through mares out, because they, you know, obviously, foals and yearlings, that's our future and stuff like that. So that's kind of how it works. And, you know, basically, we bring them out. We drive, we get them all gussied up and everything like that, and then just show them around. There'd be a judge, and he'll pick out the, you know, the best in the class for each one. And, you know, we just try to bring as many people out to kind of showcase the future of the West Virginia bread stars.
Don't put any sparkles on them, do you?
No.
Somebody taught them some tricks last year, taught a yearling how to bow. Really interesting.
One thing is that we do have some support and community, and this would help us, the more we can bring, make it a bigger, with more sponsors, we would have our feed stores, hay suppliers, lawns, tractors, vets. And this just helps us. We want to grow this event to be our fair and showcase it. And again, we have a, we are involved in the Mid-Atlantic Thoroughbred, it's a regional magazine, and so we'll do a promotion there. We'll do a promotion paper-wise. So it promotes regionally, because again, we are competing against other owners and breeders in other, in other states.
Which is a big competition.
Yeah, I think it will re-incentivize breeders to breed again. You know, many people have gotten out of it over the last few years because it's so expensive. And like I said before, it's, you know, the decisions we make today, they don't, won't pay off for five years or so. And this will actually pay off for like a year or two, you know. And so, it's, it is, it's not a lot of money, but it is, it helps. It is a little bit of money that we can look forward to and, you know, help pay our feed bills and, you know, our blacksmiths, our vets, or whatever, whatever, you know, all that stuff along the way. So I think, I think if we do, if we get this money, we will also see an increase in horses and people come to bring their horses in here, which is what we want as well.
And owners will see their horses, and they'll be excited about their pictures and their prizes. And I think, you know, we're leading up right at this time, an exciting time for us. Not a race as last Friday, but the race is coming up with the West Virginia Breeders Classics, the Sam Houghton, Carol Holden founded. And you'll shortly see silks, racing silks that'll be hanging around town. All that starts with a breeder, so.
Anything else, any questions?
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next one you'd end it is ARPA-39, which is Animal Welfare Society.
I don't envy your job. You're, don't worry, I'm not going to out to get it. And these don't, these look, might look, but they aren't as bad as the application. What I did was try to give you a little summary you can take a look at and go through that. My wife saw me putting all this together. She said, how long do you have? And I said, five to 10 minutes. And she said, well, good luck with that one. She said, you know, no one talks more than you. So anyway, the reason for our loss, like everyone else, is I guess it was the loss of fundraising revenue during the COVID years. Everybody's having the same problem. And now actually, what's happening is everybody's coming back out for more fundraising, and it can only go to the local well so many times. So, I mean, everybody's going to be experiencing a problem, and I realize that. The calculation of our loss, and I've sort of, I've put some charts in here just to give you an idea where this whole thing goes. Anyway, on pages two and page two, whatever, it'll give you where we came up with the loss. And what I basically did was compare the pre-COVID in fundraising gross income with the post or during COVID. And really, when you look at it, you can see that our income was going up from the fundraising events, the in-person events, is basically where you make all your most revenue at that. Because it's not only the ticket sales, but then when you're there, like, we couldn't hold like two or three different fundraisers. We had one at the casino, which was a silent auction, a live auction, and then the fifty-fifty tickets and everything else. So they become very profitable. Plus, you get to make your contacts where you can have other people join your organization or help you out too. So that was missing for like a two-year period. If you look at the fundraising from seven, two thousand seventeen to nineteen, it went thirty percent, twenty-eight percent, thirty-one percent for the in-funds, in-house fundraising, in-person fundraising events, down to fourteen and thirteen percent. So, I mean, that's like, like a half cut there. So in calculating the loss, what I did, since it was about half of what it would have been, it's just multiply those two years times two. And we did take off the relief that we got from the ARP and through the PPT, Payroll Protection Plan, and that brought our loss down to roughly fifty-nine thousand dollars. And that's what our request was based upon. The one thing that I mentioned here is that we run a program, among other ones, it's called a spay and neuter coupon program. And what that is, it's very easy. It's a no-overhead program. We administer, it's very simple. We print up coupons that the person that wants to get their pet spayed or neutered, that they can take to participating bets, which are primarily all of them in the area. They give the coupon to the bet, and the bet charges them a lower price. That sends us the coupon, and we reimburse the bet. So it may not seem like a lot, though, like, we're currently doing, we were doing before twenty-five dollars per coupon. And in, it came along in two thousand twenty-one. It looked like, you know, we were doing pretty good with it. And the numbers, as you can see on page three, for our, the number of coupons were going up steadily. And then all of a sudden, in early twenty-two, one of the participating vets, which is a smaller nonprofit vet that does a lot of the spay or neuter groups, came in to us with expired coupons totaling about thirteen thousand dollars. So, I mean, it was one of those things, oh, wait a minute, we weren't expecting that. I mean, where did that come from? So we had to reduce our price recently back down to twenty-five. Luckily, they settled for a much lesser amount. Instead of thirteen, they said, look, it's our problem. We know that. So we'll settle for like thirty-one hundred. They came up with a number, and we accepted that. Because you don't want to really hurt the groups that are doing the trap neuter release, and you don't want to, it just becomes a bad situation all the way around there. So that worked out pretty well. We do primarily in Jefferson County, too. This is a funny area, because you have parts of Berkeley that go around it, and then parts of other counties. But, and the cats don't know where the batteries are. You know, it's like when they're trapped, I mean, what are you going to do, you know? But then they're released. So what is this really due for us? Well, for, a couple of months ago, there was an ad, I believe in a journal, or one of the papers, that was talking about the feral cat population was starting to grow. And it could become a problem, because there are certain diseases that could be spread to your own pet, whatever. Or, you know, there's, I guess, the chance of a cat bite, scratch, transmitting something, and just the waste from the cats around different places. And if these cats aren't taken care of, they're just going to breed like crazy. So, I mean, you can see from our numbers, in two thousand seventeen, we started with number of cats, twenty-three. By the time we get up to twenty-two, it's seven hundred and eight. And I have to tell you, we don't do the trapping or anything. I mean, this is, there's TNR groups, there's other cat groups that do this. But they're all smaller groups. I mean, they don't have big fundraising. So these, a twenty-five dollar coupon or more, it means a lot of money to them. And plus, they have to pay the vet, they have to balance in the veterinary bill. And if anybody has a cat or a dog here, and it's going to a veterinary, you can see what happened with all those. And we just had two with ACL surgery. That's another whole, personally, but we won't even go there. So that's what the importance of that program is. If we can't continue that, then we're going to have to cut it back, and then it's going to be a feral cat awful for the neighborhood also. And we don't want to see that happen again. And we can tell it's beginning to work, because every year at the shelter, we think kitten season's coming up, and people get the kittens, and they bring them in. And if they're nice, they call or they ask if they could, otherwise. We just recently had two plastic tubs of cats that were dropped off, and the lids were tightly taped down and everything else. And just, if sometime in the night, you know, and unfortunately, you never know who that is that's doing. So, you know, I don't think anybody wants to see that happen. But that would be, the effect of it would be that if we had to curtail that program, which, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's one of the few programs that we do, you can cut down or cut back, but then there's, you know, the ripple effect of that going on. So we don't want to do that. And our other things that we do, and as far as what we are experiencing problems with too, because of the COVID shortage, we didn't have that additional money to carry on other things that we have to do. And the one thing too is the reimbursement or relief that we got through ARP or PPT, however you want to look at it, that's gone money. That's, that was money that was spent and is gone at this point. Obviously, we didn't have to, you know, it didn't hurt any more than that, but it's not like it's, it's the savings, but it's not cash handed at that point, because it is money that was spent. But we also now are experiencing, we have a thirteen-year-old van with a hundred ninety thousand plus miles on it we have to replace. We have repairs and maintenance in our kennel. We have to replace, or have to do different things with. And just general expenses are getting higher all over, which I think you'll agree with. So, does anyone have any questions on up to that point? Now I'll just get into one, one other. Okay. So I guess I had to, on the last page here, obviously, page four of mine anyway, it says, so what is it that you do to benefit Jefferson County? In addition to providing a safe temporary home for homeless and surrendered pets, we've been doing this for the last seventy years. This is our seventieth anniversary this year, which I think is pretty remarkable at that. We're a, basically a volunteer-run organization. All of ours are unpaid volunteers. The only paid members we have are staff members, which the staff now, it's a great staff. They're hard-to-find people that really have the dedication, that want to do that, and do it continually every day. So, so what else do we do in for the, for the county? We run a low, a low-cost rabies clinic. We generally do that twice a year for senior citizens, veterans, and first responders. We also have discounts available in adoption of pets. We promote animal awareness with children. We have young kids coming in from the different groups on occasion, and they will get, socialize our cats. That's the easiest thing to do with small cats. And it's very, it's almost heart-wrenching or touching if you see a little kid sitting there reading a book through the cats. I mean, it's just, you know, one of those things. But, but it does give them an awareness of animals, how to handle them, what to do, what not to do. So hopefully, it'll help down the road there. So unfortunately, in this time, there's people that can't afford to keep their pets. And, you know, it was one of those things, a question came on, or we get a lot of times, well, did you have a lot of people after COVID that they, the adopted dogs came back to you? No, that really didn't happen in any large numbers. But what we do find now, were people that just can't afford their pets anymore. They can't, we had one case that was just, I thought was horrendous, where a gentleman came in, he lost his job, he lost his housing, he was living out of his car, and he had two cats living in the car with, and I mean, these were big cats. They were almost like small dogs. And, you know, we really didn't have time, not time, we didn't really have space at the time. But, I mean, you could not, not pick these cats. And we did. But that was, I don't think it was a dry eye anyplace that day. So, I mean, there's these people that we help out. And unfortunately, in a county like ours, where you think everybody's doing great, unfortunately, some people won't. So you have to do that. Again, I mentioned the spay and neuter project. What we do too, we have, myself included, we have another member of the board, Sean Murtaugh, that's a member of the local emergency committee, planning committee for Jefferson County, associated with the FEMA groups. And what we will be doing, when, it's one of those things you don't think of until you're in it, I guess, but someone had to forethought. If there's an evacuation that has to be done, or could be now forest fires or floods or anything like that, if there was a tornado that went through here a couple of years ago, luckily, that wasn't that bad. But, and they have to evacuate people. Most people, if they have animals, aren't going to leave, or are going to give you problems leaving unless they take their animal. So we will be operating the animal, excuse me, the emergency animal disaster trailer, for lack of a better word, that is all equipped with cages and ever, whatever, cages food. There's a big supply of that within the trailers. I think there's about fifty cages that we will set up probably in a school or something. They're working out arrangements for that, so that the pets can come there, the, their owners can go to another shelter, and everybody will be taken care of at that point. So that's just another little thing we'd like to do there. And the last thing I'm going to bring up is a good neighbor, and hopefully a friend here. We assist the Jefferson County Animal Control wherever we can. We're right down in the street. So, I mean, we see each other all the time. We aren't necessarily associated with them, but we're trying to be good neighbors. And what I have done is attached And what I have done is attached some of their Facebook pages where they may post regarding three animal hoarding situations, which we assist, members of our staff assisted with them. And one, one dealt with fourteen cats, which we ended taking. And another one in a small, apparently, from what I understand, a small house. The man had forty-nine dogs, which we took, ended up taking thirty. Luckily, they were all small dogs. Small dogs you can deal with and, and it happened to be a time when we had a little lull in the kennel. So, I mean, we're the, where we could use our runs, the larger runs, and put maybe three or four small dogs in. And there's an outside run and then other runs after that, too. They have all been adopted. And they've all been, we, any of our dogs that go out of our shelter are spayed, neutered, microchipped, and are current on all their shots. The adoption fees, which are slightly over a hundred dollars, do not cover that. So, I mean, that's COVID sort of hurt everything along the way here. And the last thing, and you're going to love a puppy. So if you look at the last page, we have all kinds of the dogs. And those were the dogs that were surrendered from the hoarding situation, just, just two of them. They were pregnant dogs when they came and had their puppies with us. We just had another one that came in. She's adopting her cute dog, Kelly. She has ten puppies. So, and, and they're just as cute as she is. If there's anything else I can add here or?
Just to say, I'm glad you brought the pictures and not the dog.
No. Look at the last. Well, I thank you for your time and again, I will be taking your job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda is ARCA One, Harper's Ferry Boulevard, Public Service District, Lieutenant.
Well, thanks for your time, guys. To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know if we're in the right place or not. We're a public utility. And we weren't devastated by COVID or anything like that, or ratepayers paid their bills. We were just told to fill out the paperwork that there would be some possible cash available for projects. So. I don't know.
There's various categories that ARCA fits in. So it's like tourism, infrastructure, health and safety.
The structure is one of them.
Okay.
And yours typically is the infrastructure. Can you talk about the project?
Sure. Well, when, when we found out about this, I had like an hour to get stuff together. So I just threw out some numbers, but I actually had some time to think of some projects that would benefit us if the funding is available. And I have the paperwork here if you guys would like to look at it. This is in addition to what was on the form that I filled out. Like I said, I had an hour to fill it out and get it submitted.
Yeah, if you have additional handouts, if you have, make sure that everybody gets a copy.
Okay, I'll, I'll give them to you. But, I mean, we would love, we're a small utility, seven hundred and sixty customers. So anything that we could get would go a long way. We could allot a bank for any, any dollars that we could get. And we could get projects started immediately if we get any kind of funding. It wouldn't be years to see the benefits of anything.
How does this play into what the mayor asked us for, talking about
It's supposed to.
leaking water system?
Now, are you, are you talking about Harper's Ferry? We're not a part of the municipality.
Well, I understand, but he talked about leaking water pipes and other stuff that was related to sewer water and sewer. So I don't, I just want to make sure we have a clear picture.
We don't want to create a redundancy.
Right, you got it.
Again, they run the water plant, we run the sewer plant.
Okay.
No affiliation.
That helps me, yeah.
It's easier to separate.
Yeah, now I am ashamed.
We, we submitted on the form, we would like to do a pipelining project, which is a big deal for us. For one of our major feeder lines to our pump station, which would help with inflow and infiltration. When our system was installed back in the late seventies, one of our main sewer pipes runs, runs right down a wet weather creek. Yeah, it wasn't great foresight. That's what we're stuck with. And we have some leaky manholes that we would like to repair, raise up above grade and stuff like that. And in addition to some other wish list projects that we would love to do if, if anything's available.
Yeah, and what, what would help me as we make our decisions is maybe have a category for Harper's Ferry, one for the water plant, one for the sewer, so we can get things sorted.
I think they're on here in two different places.
Right, and what goes hand in hand.
I'd like to think of them together. That way, we don't do one thing and then just ignore the other part.
More, you know.
Like to have them work together.
Supply lots of water, but not the right kind. Use water.
Well, again, a municipality is regulated differently by the Public Service Commission, too. We, we, they have elected officials. If there's people in town who don't like what they're doing, they vote them out.
Well, we just, I just want to understand, I realize you both operate under different parameters, but that, I didn't really realize at this point that the P S D, the Harper's Ferry P S D, did only do sewer. The town is providing the water. I thought they were interconnected.
When, when you treat your sewer, do you release it back into the stream or do you release it to?
The Shenandoah.
You release it in the Shenandoah.
Yes, ma'am.
After it's treated.
No reuse. We are not capable for water reuse. We're, we're a forty-year-old wastewater plant that we just had an upgrade. And again, seven hundred and sixty customers to spread out the deals.
I know, and that's the problem with the town, too. There's not enough to do the capital projects.
So you have a limit on what your customers can bear? So I have a list of who, who. That's really all I had. I thought I was at the wrong place.
You're fine.
No.
Any other questions? I can help you with?
I don't think right now, but I would imagine some coming.
Yeah, or I don't think we're going to make decisions today. We're going to study all these recent cases.
Our contact information is on the top. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Shenandoah Junction Public Sewer, Lisa Hyer. I did not hear back from him. ARCA Eighteen Water Advisory Committee, Gary Sell.
She was just, she was just here.
She was here. I know, I don't know, I didn't see the application, but I know that the Water Advisory Committee has been trying to find funding to have this study done for years.
Since I was on.
Yeah, and you know, I understand people may think it's a lot of money, which the, the data you get back, but the data is absolutely critical.
It informs a lot of other decisions.
Yes, yes. And as the county grows and more and more people that want to invest in the county will want to know our water quality in different areas.
Are there questions?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
ARCA Eighteen.
ARCA Eighteen.
Okay. That's it?
Okay.
She's requesting four hundred thousand dollars for the water study. I believe it's a multi-year study.
Yes. Yes, and the price has changed. They found some other money or some others to take away.
I didn't like it.
I didn't like it in the font. Have you been adding more and more streams? Because when I was on it, I was like, if it had been got more streams, they'd be more likely to get more grants. So I don't know if that's.
I think that's some of that, and, you know, we've been working with Mark Kudar. So, and he has a long history of studying issues in the county. He did a single study years and years and years. So we know all the stuff is interconnected underground. So especially in the area I live, so it's important to us, to me especially, and others in the area that we know what's in our water. And, you know, some of that's people from animals or people and the other nasty things like old dumps. So. Or just people not getting their septic tanks pumped.
Let's move on to the next one. I think we do have a representative here from Shepherdstown Fire Department regarding their cluster bunk room. And I also would like to do with a copy of the architectural drawings.
My name's Steve Madison. I'm the vice president of Shepherdstown Fire Department. So our request is for fire station renovations specifically for the sleeping and living areas. Although this will benefit both career staff and volunteers, I think the career staff will benefit the most from it. Station is over thirty years old now. The facilities for, you know, the living areas are pretty old and outdated. And they, they weren't designed for career staff. So our primary objective with the renovations is, you know, safety and specifically health reasons. Our current facilities get very small bunk rooms. They're located on the first floor right up, right on, right adjacent to the engine base. So you enter right in the engine base. There's really no privacy. The engine base are probably the most public area in the fire station. They're small, especially now that we're getting more career, I mean, when COVID started, we had one hermetic. Now we have twenty-four seven, two-person staff. So there's a couple bunk beds in there, really no room to move around in the rooms. Showers, we have public restrooms, again, on the first floor, right on the Bay Area. The showers are located in there. So the career staff are taking showers basically in the public restrooms. So our proposal is to repurpose an area that we have on the second floor above all that, which is currently three offices, conference room, some small bathrooms. And we would take that whole area and make it basically a, a sleeping area. It'd be a controlled area, controlled access. There'll be two separate bunk rooms, one for women, one for, for men, and then private restrooms, showers. Be designed with up-to-date codes, including newer fire sprinklers and alarm systems. Each bunk room will have its own dedicated H vac system, not connected to any other areas of the fire station. They're larger, so, you know, members can distance themselves better than, than the current locations. We're planning to put a locker room also up there. Career staff will also be assigned individual lockers to get their personal items. It's segregated from the engine bay by at least two doors, two walls. So, you know, the, the conditions that exist now will be taken care of. The current bunk rooms will be utilized. So the men's bunk room right now is adjoining the day room. So our plan is to, to combine those together and extend the day room. And the day room is a kitchenette, kind of a lounging area. And that's usually the main hangout area for, you know, career staff and all of your five, five person there at the station.
Lots of refilling.
Yes. So the ladies bunk room would also, including the showers that are currently in the downstairs restrooms, will be converted into one office space and probably a better location for it in the public area than upstairs. We believe these will improve, you know, safety, comfort, privacy. And it also will be, could, could be extended for, in the future, when more staffing probably assigned to the station. If you look at other counties in the area around us, that's going to be the trend of increased staffing to the volunteer stations. So it's actually a road ahead for that. Awesome. So we do have a plan that they could have handed out. Plan's been reviewed and by the state fire marshal. So we're basically good to go. We plan to batch any funds we get from the ARCA. And, yeah, so if we get funding, I think we'd be ready to actually go for a contract.
So what's the total cost of funding? Is it three hundred thousand or?
No, because we matched the funding. I think last year when we were estimating a little over five hundred thousand. So that's why we, we have the three hundred thousand, if they're not to exceed, if our fund will match whatever we use.
I, I know you said that where you're placing or want to place these bunk rooms, they're for expansion. But this initial phase, I'm just curious, how many people can be accommodating?
I mean, they, they, we, we haven't like designed out like the furniture in the bunk rooms. The bunk rooms would be, you know, in the order multiple times larger than the current bunk rooms. So depending, you know, what type of beds you want to get now, if I show something together, would dictate that. But it would definitely handle, you know, multiple groups.
So, so like three, three men and three women?
At least, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to have an idea of size. Is, is this separate from the live-in program or would this also be used as a?
It's separate from the living, live-in program. So that's a separate area of the fire station.
Any more questions? Thank you.
All right.
We're pretty early right now. Did we want to go ahead and take a break? We're not expecting the next six until two forty-five. Take like a fifteen minute break.
Yes.
All right, welcome back, everybody. I'll go ahead and turn back over to Michelle.
Mary Sal has arrived, so we'll go ahead and look at ARPA 18. I'm sorry if I didn't put this too early.
No, we were early. You're fine.
I provided a handout, which is before you. I'm minus one copy of all the ones. We have, thank you for your time. We have been before you with the study, starting in 2020, with kind of commission, when it's kind of commissioned voting to approve it, but not fund it. Since then, there have been a number of changes in the science behind it or asking for it. And that's mainly with the Senate Concur Resolution requiring a PFAS study of statewide. And so that's what I'm going to talk to you about today. We, we are asking for a big ask, $400,000. The United States Geological Survey has committed 150,000. This is the third fiscal year they have committed it. It may roll off this year, but we can re-ask for it again. We also believe that there may be other new matching revolving funds. The United States Office of Policy Analysis checked with EPA. We took an EPA that we thought we were eligible for state revolving funds, which is one of the ARPA grants. The other noted needs at your discretion is health disparities from pollution in the COVID-19 pandemic. So if the scope is related to health and pollution related, then it could be funded under ARPA grants. But USGS did their due diligence on that. Now, you have due diligence well, well covered here in this kind of commission with your staff. But just quickly, this really sums where we're at, this, this status report. And I'll point you to, there's been a number of investigative ground order issues. But the third bullet, third line is where I'd like to draw your attention to, that the statewide assessment of PFAS current polyfluor- fluor alcohol substances have been identified. And we'll look at that slide here shortly. And this study, the USGS knew that this study was ongoing. So we built this into our study for the 400,000 to drill down on what's going on, what, what we see in Jefferson County, sample up to 90 sites for these constituents. The rate on, the last bullet, rate on 222, that's really more prevalent on the mountain, the mountain area. But I think I, in July of this year, I sent a memorandum with a link to the study to each of you. We are planning a, to do a meeting on, we'd like to work with the county commission and staff on how to do, the USGS, they would like to come and present this to the county, given the findings. And we can do, talk to you about doing it there. We were thinking of maybe Shepherd University or somewhere here or something that could, we think the public interest will be, the public will be interested. I guess the last thing I'd probably point you to, this slide and this slide, in particular, this slide. This was the finding. And you can see the Ohio and Eastern Panhandle. And this is provided for me by Mark Kozar today out of that 52-page study. So this is the state level study that found this in our county. And this study would look closer at 90 sites to see a more detailed analysis of this, just honing in on our Jefferson County. One thing it would tell us, it would tell us about, the county had upgraded its well, well requirements, that wells needed to be sealed in placement some years ago, which has really helped prevent the well, well drinkers, which is a large percentage of this county. So that is it, in a nutshell. On the federal level, the EPA is looking at this as a potential hazardous contaminant that may need to be remediated or mitigated. So that's something coming down the line. I know it's a lot of money, money is scarce, but we'd like to put this on your radar to do a, to do a public announcement, have this on a priority list, that the USGS is very interested in doing this study. And I'll take any questions. Oh, it is, it is an independent party. It will be published online. We would not be, the samples would be sampled in West Virginia. At our, I believe at our locally town, they would be able to do it there. It is a two or three-year study to collect the data onsite and then publish and analyze it and publish it. It'd be published online, be part of the public domain. We wouldn't own it in any way. So, any questions? We also presented before the JCDA, and they were supportive of it as well. Okay, thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda is Friendship Fire Company, it's an again ARPA 48.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I didn't realize when we submitted our application that we have the opportunity to talk to you. So we're very appreciative of that. And I do know that all of you are familiar with who we are, what we do, how we're funded. We've worked many hours together in the past. So I'm going to save you the long-winded version of how desperate we are for donations and funding moving forward. I'm here to tell you that we have submitted an application for new radios and emergency communication equipment. We have been struggling mightily over the past two years. When the pandemic hit, it greatly negatively affected our fundraising opportunities. And again, I know you guys have heard this story a lot, but it is all part of, you know, where we are. We have been juggling priorities, if you will, on what money we can, you know, sustain and so on and so forth. And when our fundraising halted, you know, we were basically forced to find creative ways to make ends meet and, you know, keep things moving along. But it didn't take long to realize that, you know, we were kind of borrowing from ourselves at some point. And with no money going back in the bank to power ourselves back, it, you know, became a problem. We had to re, you know, reprioritize things. So with that refocus, we decided that we were going to come and ask the county to help us with, you know, acknowledging the request of the available ARPA money that is available. We filled out everything, all of our budget is online as requested. We put the proposals on there, the operating budget. So I feel like everything's in order, but certainly if you see that it's not happy to be transferring anything to me. The big deal for us is, you know, the communication equipment, you know, is expensive and very expensive. And that's why the Juggling Act had to come in. You know, our, our current system is approximately 15 years old. We originally got our radio equipment on a grant way back years ago, 15 years ago. And we have sort of been band-aiding our system along the way. You know, other priorities popped up and we've been kind of kicking the can down the road. Our technology now is so antiquated that it's very difficult now to be able to talk to our municipal counties, Washington County, Frederick County, Loudoun County in particular. Anytime we go into an incident, they've got to set up a patch channel for us so that, you know, that we can communicate. So with all those mandated fixes, now we've discovered that parts are very difficult to come by. The batteries are not keeping a charge and it's costing us more to repair them than it is to be here begging for money today. So, you know, I do want to bring up too, that most recently, you know, everybody's familiar with the paperboard fire. This kind of honestly from the president of the fire company, this was kind of the last straw. We had an incident, we had equipment failure. Some of our officers had to come outside, regroup with everybody, you know, from some of the municipal counties that were responding on that incident. And it's just, we just cannot continue to take the risk. So I'm in a position now that it's my responsibility to take care of our crews. Yes, it is our chief's responsibility too, but my priority is to make sure they're on the streets safe. And I took on responsibility from those guys to be here to talk to you about it today. And hopefully we can make something happen. I don't want to be on that side of the fence if something actually tragically does happen. I do want to add a quick note. I do think that moving forward, this equipment, it does align us with the other Jefferson County Fire and Rescue companies. It also aligns us with JCSA. And I think that it is a good fit for the investment we're about to make in the ambulance transition. So just know that it's not something that Friendship Fire Company is asking for. This is a community benefit 100% and it works across the boundaries, right? So I'll close, just so that you guys can ask questions. I just told you about, you know, my priorities and, you know, making sure that our, our people are safe. And, you know, this is going to be, you know, a priority for the community in ways that right now, we are paying a lot to ensure this stuff. If we're able to do this, this is a return on your investment of again, 10 or 15 years. It's not something we'll be back in front of you again five years down the road. I also want you to know, full transparency, we have put money into and have done a lot of work in trying to get grants for this so that we wouldn't have to be in this situation. We also did contact our municipalities and discussion with them about doing it. The number that we showed them, quite frankly, made them gag. There was no way that they, I mean, they just don't have the ability to be able to, to help, right? So to be quite honest with you, if I wasn't asking you for radios, I'd be asking you for something else because we really truly are trying to prioritize. And I do think that this is the number one priority that benefits not just us, but the community as a whole. So I will close with that and allow any questions. I did spend a considerable amount of time on the application. I think everything's there, but you know, if not, let me know what I need to do to make a right. And we certainly are willing to do that.
And I provided him with his most recent quote for radio, so his number should be a good number.
I had this one to ask, if you had a quote, if you had something similar to what the ESA.
Yes, my apologies. I actually, nerves are working. I try, I'm trying not to avoid you with long-winded stuff, but I did want to touch on that. So we, we are aligned with the exact same models, the exact same technology as JCSA. It's important to us that we, you know, we do that, whether it's, you know, fire hoses or, you know, equipment or whatever. The radios, we, we got the same Motorola type of equipment that JCSA just went through. And I don't want to speak for Chief Moon that's coming up, but you know, that, that is the plan, is to be able to connect with everyone.
And how many radios would that need for?
I believe it's 21, I, I believe. I don't, I didn't print the application in front, actually maybe I did, I can't remember.
Well, I think perhaps we need to come up with a strategic radio purchase for the whole camp. I mean, everybody needs new radios.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, we've tried to do that. Like we've, we've paid for and had grant consultants come in and try to get county radios for us. I mean, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. I mean, I'm not a grant expert necessarily, but you're right. I mean, all of them need upgraded from, from time to time. We have just not been lucky enough to get it. We've had other priorities, engine replacement, you know, whatever the case may be, you guys know the drill. We just, we're just stuck, you know? And maybe that's some of our own fault because we've punted these big expenses and we've always been able to band-aid it, but the band-aid has run out. And, you know, we're, we're teetering on, you know, safety issues now. And, you know, I just, I don't want to move forward. So I do have it, Commissioner Jackson. Don't have my glasses, I'm sorry. I think, I think it's 21, it's 21 or 22, something like that, what it is in there. And I apologize for jumping around a little bit. Again, you'll see that there's two proposals in the system because we were going to split it in half and try to get some from Oliver, some from Harper's Ferry. So when we got them, we asked them to break them apart a little bit, but combined, it's about $150,000 commitment. That comes with warranty, it comes with us making sure that they're insured. And again, that return on investment, we wouldn't expect another upgrade for, you know, at least another 10 years. You know, with the assumption that there's no breakdown or we don't lose it in a fire or something like that.
Where, where do you seek the grant at? Is it a FEMA? It's a FEMA grant, okay. Once we get our FDIV number, we'd be able to ask for that grant, Michelle?
We would, yes.
We would be able to apply and then, like, as a countywide and then, and then say, I'm just making it something. Mike needs 20, you need 20, or whoever, we can divide them up.
We could partner together.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would tell you that, you know, any inclusion and, you know, the interests of you guys partnering to try and do that would certainly be helpful. You know, I, I'll just share with you facts, it's not opinion or anything. But, you know, when we were, when we were trying to get our, we were trying to place two pieces of equipment with one to try and be more efficient and as cost, you know, as cost efficient to the community as we could be. You know, we had all these politicians coming in, you know, Mooney came in. I can't remember everyone, but they all came in, they all gave us letters, they all came in and did their photo ops. And we were like, oh, this is cool, we're in the bag, we have done everything. And unfortunately, it just doesn't work that way. So I'm only telling you that because FEMA doesn't really see it like that, right? I mean, they'll give you a letter of support. I mean, you know, Senator Capito gave us letters of support and everything like that. So I'm just giving you that background that it's not necessarily as, as easy once you get into the, you know, kind of the other side of the agency. So, but I certainly applaud the, any ability to assist.
You know, from hearing what you said in your story with the papermill is, you know, seems like the need is kind of immediate and it is a, it is a life and death, particularly with our first responders too. I don't, I don't know that waiting necessarily to file a grant for FEMA is going to solve the problem today.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, we've had this conversation kind of interdepartmentally, you know, and I hate to be overdramatic, but, I mean, when 9/11 happened, what was the biggest problem? Communications, nobody could talk to one another. Well, certainly not to that scale or size, but we're starting to feel the same type of stuff. When we've got 25 people inside the whole town paperboard and five of them have to come out because they can't hear what we're saying outside, that's a problem, right? That's not your all's fault and that's nobody else's fault, it's just where we are. So that's why we're prioritizing it and, you know, and we'll, we'll continue to juggle other things. But man, this, this is a big, you know, big ask. I understand that everybody is, you know, trying to take advantage and, you know, get funding that wouldn't otherwise be available. But, you know, I like to think that we could prioritize, you know, public safety and, you know, the, especially now that, you know, we have, you know, the transition coming, you know, it's an investment in all of our responders. The way I see it, it's not just about us, it's just a portion of all of us.
And just to echo some of what Commissioner Stoller said, I've seen FEMA grants used to purchase breathing apparatus, helmets. A lot of the gear that they carry needs to be replaced on a regular basis because as it's exposed to, you know, those toxic fumes, it becomes ineffective to protect the person who's wearing it. So all of those things need replaced on a regular basis.
Okay, yeah. No doubt. Well, maybe, maybe that might be an idea we could do, once we get our number, that we could maybe plow them for all the volunteer companies.
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly invite, you know, any opportunity to take advantage of yours, we have leadership and, you know, whatever you could do to do that. I mean, because, because it does go on radios, I mean, it's a cycle, right? And you guys familiar with technology now, I mean, it, you know, computers and stuff like that is on, you know, a three to five year swap, you know, and technology is moving faster than we are. So, you know, we're just, now, you know, there, we don't have, we can't go to the shelf and buy spare batteries and just plug them in. And even the ones that we are being able to find are not holding charge as long. The charging equipment's different, it's not really compatible and it's just really is problematic. And I will tell you this too, I'm not going to step into the chief sandbox here, but I will tell you that our mutual aid companies are, they're frustrated about the fact that they've got to go through, they're calling us in for help, but they're also frustrated at the effort that they have to go to communicate back and forth with us, right? It shouldn't be that hard. So anyway, that's my, that's my ask and would appreciate any consideration. And if there's nothing else, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ARPA 47, the Way Volunteer Power Company, Chief Moon here.
Good afternoon. And also thank you for the opportunity to come here and make this presentation. A lot of my information would be the very same as what Chris presented, because we're all working in the same system. We have been requesting for $259,480 for replacement of radios. And that will add your radios to our fleet as well. As he had talked about, as we start seeing other companies coming into our county, we start having the problem with communication. So we want to make sure, like on our command vehicle, we have a few extra radios on there so that we have something to be able to communicate with them. Because communication is not face to face, it's all over the radio. The radios we've got are over 10 years old. They stopped making them, they stopped making parts for them. So as we're trying to get things repaired, we're finding it's just not possible. Same with batteries, the batteries that are out here are generic batteries, they're not holding up. They're not holding the charge like they used to. So we're seeing very regular failures for our radio systems out in the city. During the past two years, we have seen quite a huge liking calls with COVID. Our agencies have run more than they've ever run. So the radios are being used more and more and more. And then after being used because they're in environments that have got COVID, they're being used harsh cleaners on them that is looking like that's taking a toll on their operation. While they are pretty durable, these cleaners just get into everything. Yeah, so we've, we've also put in for grants over several years, trying to replace them through AFG. I think this is our third round of asking for that. Nothing has been issued, nothing's even on the horizon of that. Grants are one of those things, you know, you're sitting it out there, it's really, you're trying to pitch your stories the best you can and see where it lands. We've been successful in the past with some, the radios, we've not been successful. Yeah, over the past couple of years with COVID, we saw a lot of closures, which really affected our fundraising. We've got some great fundraising at our, at our fire company. And we've seen a reduction over, since the beginning of COVID, about two-thirds in our fundraising income. It's starting to bounce back a little bit now, but that's still, we've had a lot of expenses over this past couple of years. They're really taking a toll on our bank account. So looking at having to do radios into this, it's just not something that we can afford at this point in time. So what we're asking for at this point in time is ARPA funding to go towards replacement of our current radios and add us to a total of 39. And then we'll also add radios, we have three of our radars that don't have mobile radios in them, the rest do. As they came in, we got, we were the last on the list, being the newest fire company. And we weren't on the radar of the ECC when radios were being issued. So they actually talked to other fire companies who are out here and said, instead of taking 50, can you take 45? Yeah, can you take a few less so that we can pass them on the middle way so we can keep theirs going? And get their, get them some new radios when we started. As far as the mobiles, the same thing, we've got mobiles that were kind of, this vehicle got sold, that vehicle got sold. Yeah, and that's where we got some of ours from. Unfortunately, we've got at least three that don't have mobiles at all. So that would be adding those to those vehicles. We got the quote from Bear Communications, which is the same We got the quote from Bear Communications, which is saying when ESA is going off, I haven't worked exactly often. So that number is, is a specific quote for us on the exact same radio system that the county is using.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is ARPA 30 Corporation of Shepherdstown.
Good afternoon. I'm Lori Robertson, recorder of Corporation of Shepherdstown. Thank you for allowing me to give you a brief description and overview regarding the PATH project leading from Linden Drive along Shepherdstown Middle School to Morgan's Grove Park. I'll keep it brief, as most, not all of you are familiar with the project. With me today is Mayor Shepherdstown Jim Onser and Matt Mullin, executive director of the Hagerstown Eastern Handhandle Metropolitan Planning Organization. The PATH project was started in 2014 to increase the use of Morgan's Grove Park and to encourage a safe walking and biking alternative to driving to the park. With the increased use, it will help the Shepherdstown Community Club bring awareness to the park, thus increasing their fundraising efforts to maintain it. There are 70 homes slated for the subdivision that was recently sold by Kensley to Horton that a portion of the path fronts. Kensley has constructed the aprons for their driveways and a small section of the path already at their expense. The Shepherdstown Middle School is slated to move in a few years. And the PATH encourages new use of the building with access to the park. Currently, the escape route for Shepherdstown Middle School is down 480 to Asbury Church. And currently, that space is about that wide. The goal is to also link up alternate 45's current path at the intersection that leads to the entrance of the new Shepherdstown Public Library. That intersection is zoned commercial for future growth and the path will pass directly in front of any new businesses going there. The engineering is complete. We are happy to share the plans with the commission. Thank you, Matt. The corporation has been awarded three grants to date. We have been awarded just over $1.5 million for construction and $130,000 for engineering. In total, the corporation has provided 213,000 in matching funds. And we so appreciate the generosity of the county you all have provided to date. We have two years to start construction and we lose our funding. The 300,000 ARPA requested from the county will close our funding gap. This money will also include a safe crossing at the intersection linking to alternate 45. I want to thank you for your time and consideration and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
I'm just gonna confirm 300,000 if I can hear your request.
If you don't mind, so. I'll take the opportunity to speak since you're here. Northern part of the county is growing. And there are those houses right across from Morgan's Grove. We, we were gonna hook them up the water and see where they come before. Home builders, be about 70 homes for right now. But that, the crossing there from Morgan's Grove Park back up towards the new library, and Steve was there yesterday, and the library is great, but that'll be a real advantage to provide a safe walkway for, for residents not to go back and forth from out that way back into Shepherdstown and vice versa. And we really need something. You all, it's not like nobody's familiar with 480. It's awful. As a matter of fact, we got a lady, we, we received a letter the other day chastising us for not doing a better job, that we were putting their family in jeopardy by not providing access. It was just coincidental, but it's true. And this would really be something that would help complete going up the bypass and maybe back into Shepherdstown by Ronnie Brown's coming back into town that way. So we've been trying to work on that for some time. But we all know that the population there in, in, in northern part of the county is, uh, is growing and and it's, and ironically, it's Shepherdstown's turned into our responsibility that our new police to provide other things for that growing population. So this would be really advantageous to all of us to do this. So we're requesting 300,000 to close the funding gap. That may not close it entirely, so it'll be whatever is needed. Whatever needs other than that, then we'll have to look for a way to provide. But we really appreciate you making effort to do this. It's important to all of us. Recreation is really important. I mean, we saw that during the pandemic and we want to utilize the community club. And they've agreed, they've done a really good job fixing it up and making themselves responsible for taking care of their own park. So, there you go. Thanks.
I just want to make a quick suggestion. Obviously, we only have about $800,000 left and.
We don't need all that.
But we have probably five, I don't know, I haven't counted my five or six things that we ask, I guess. And, you know, obviously Horton's coming in, you know, they're the number one home builder in country. If, I think what maybe we should do is sit down, talk to them and maybe, maybe they might be able to contribute some as well.
How could it, it's one of those things, how could it hurt? How could it hurt? But nevertheless, I mean, that may come for something more than the 300,000. By the time this starts, I mean, this is really gotten more expensive with the law. Let's take it. I mean, hell, this has been going on for almost 10 years.
We started off about 600,000.
Right. So it's going up. So e- e- even to close the funding gap after you give us the 300,000, we could, we could talk to Horton about that and we could come along with this. I believe you.
We have you at the meeting, I know.
Yep.
I saw the back coast offloading yesterday to the project, so.
Yeah.
I think that handling, so we don't have to speed in there, so it'd be easy to just take the back end, put your sandbox in. We're just asking, leave it, leave it full of fuel over the weekends, for the weekend.
Yes, sir. So there you go.
All right.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, we're good. Thank you all.
And then the last item on for today will be ARPA 50, which is kind of fair association, I will.
Thank, thank you for the opportunity to make this request. We did, I think got in the ballgame a little late, so I hope you all got a chance to get a copy of what I finished submitting last night. By the time we realized that this might be a possible opportunity for us, we were kind of right on top of our fair week and I'm sure as many of you I know, we were all a little stretched last week as we concluded our 2022 fair. The big ask here in my mind is, is for revenue loss for the fact that we were not able to have our 2020 fair. Our fair is our largest revenue sharing and provides funding for almost everything we do throughout the entirety of the year. We were established in 1953. Began holding the fair at Chamindeau Downs, Trumpstown Race Track area. In 1975, through the gracious support of the county commission, we moved to our current location. And the county has granted us additional land over the years. But getting land's one thing and then you still have to do something with it. And so largely the fair, it's revenue from its annual fair event. The gracious donations from the community, the business entities and volunteers have built just about everything you see at our current fairgrounds. Most of what you see though is between 30 and 40 years old and it all takes maintenance. So revenue streams are increasingly important. I think as you all can appreciate, volunteerism continues to decline and so finding those volunteer resources to do those things becomes increasingly challenging. I'm concerned for the next 30 or 40 years, if volunteerism continues to decline, you know, not only do we then have to find funding for the materials to upkeep the facility, but then we have to find, you know, a way to pay for the labor as well. So, over the last 10 years, maybe 15 years, we've been on a steady march of maintenance and repair to our facilities. We've got what I consider 20 major structures at fairgrounds. And we're down to three or four roofs. Each roof costs about $50,000 in materials. We're expecting the next, we replace them to be somewhere closer to $60,000 in materials. So those prices continue to march. Other notable improvements that we've made over the last couple of years, we just finished a massive partnership with Jefferson County Schools, Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, and the Jefferson County Chamber of Commerce to install a substantial broadband service at our fairgrounds. So I'll say about a third of our facility now has adequate broadband. And that was brought about in part because we've become an emergency relocation reunification site with Jefferson County Schools. And another piece of that that is currently pending, the health department has asked us to formalize an agreement to serve as an emergency distribution location should we enter some sort of health emergency in the future. So for, for reasons of that nature, I think maintaining the facility is critical, maintaining the infrastructure that there is, is critical. And that is really, I think, one of the major reasons that we need to focus on that and ensure that those buildings are good to go for another 30 or 40 years. The other big thing that we did in the last couple of years, we did a massive stormwater project. That was with help from the West Virginia Conservation Agency and that was about a $100,000 project, so.
And lots of volunteers too.
And absolutely, again, the materials are one thing, but the labor to get the job done is another. So again, appreciate the opportunity, certainly happy to answer any questions. Got things a little late in the game. We're certainly happy to provide some financial backing, some reports, et cetera, to the commission's side, so.
I know of all of the other events that are there, but can you explain to the other commissioners, what I mean, truck pull, true?
Sure.
Arts and crafts.
Arts and crafts, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So in addition to our annual fair event, we, we manage what we call an all season rental program. Live stock shows, arts and crafts events, estate auctions, just a wide variety of different things. 4H program uses our facility for quite a few events, horse show, annual basis, horse shows, their 4H big day, you know, a lot of, lot of 4H events, truck pulls, tractor pulls, mud bogs. We've had a little bit of everything there. So yeah, it's, it's certainly a facility that is in demand from the community. The demand continues to grow. And I don't think that's gonna slow down as our community continues to grow.
And Jeff, for good earlier issue.
We, we were very pleased with the weather cooperate. Having an event is so weather dependent right now for an event. And we had a couple nights that were really great. Mixed in with some very average nights and so we made for a great week.
Okay, Jim.
So I guess at this point, are there any projects that you want to review and approve today? And then the next thing would be to, to schedule another meeting to make some final decisions.
I, I don't know how to do it, but I think we need to come up with a strategic approach on the radios given our new direction and every, our department needs radios, it seems, and I think the bigger the order, the more, less price should be per radio.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see the quote or proposal, because I see friendship is projecting four to six weeks and I believe middle way has a much longer duration, so I think about three to six months for companies.
ESA told us six to eight months, so I, I, it's definitely not four to six.
Yeah, and I know Baker didn't ask for radios as well, so I have to go back to this there.
Yeah, ESA has received their radios from what I understand, but it just takes a long time to get them to service.
Yeah, that's, that's the other part of it, was the programming too. I know it takes a while, so.
Yep.
Because I was also wondering, I don't know, but would it be possible to kind of hold discount if ordering that many?
Well, that's what I think.
We can check on that.
What, um, how much, what's the chances of phone or putting in for a grant? Are they due in January as well? Is this when all the FEMA grants?
Well, FEMA grants are, I mean, they can be due throughout the year, but I would imagine it's a similar schedule to the state for grants. I mean, it's still typically another year before you hear. Are we?
I, I think a grant's a good idea, but I know what you've mentioned earlier. I'm worried that it would just take too long. It seems like.
I think we could use a grant for other things and since we have some of these funds available to us, we could probably immediately start making an impact or renewing at least those radios.
If I could make a suggestion, what we could do is poll all of the volunteer firing departments, ask them what they need and then we'll get a number and then I'll have, uh, Ernest and see since he purchased his last lot of radios, see if we can't get a bulk discount on but that, whatever that number is, I don't know what it even looks like. I think we've got 29 and then. Yeah, and there's some mobile and there's some portable, so it's a mix of both.
We've only had three that've come forward and asked.
So I'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll put something out and ask what they need.
And, and does it make any difference what is ordered compared to the transition? We're making it E911 to the new platform. I just want to make sure it all works.
And my, my thoughts are this too, you know, you have seven different fire companies. And I'm making this up. You might have 100 volunteers, okay? They might ask for 150 radios amongst all of them because for, if they have somebody new coming in at the door, a new volunteer. So we might be able to inventory those radios, you know, order some extra ones or give, you know, take, what, what's their need and want?
So what I think, is that makes sense? We can ask them, give us your number.
Yeah.
And then we can maybe pump that up by a dozen.
Yep.
And then we, we inventory or we house the spares. So if they need a spare, we can put it in service. Instead of having the volunteer fire companies hold the spares, am I hearing you right?
Yes, because, because they're going, are gonna ask for extra spares, I think, for new volunteers coming on board. I think we should house them and, and then, you know, then we'll, we'll get a real number that way, I think. And we'll know how many we potentially need.
I mean, it makes sense because these radios are so expensive and they're a huge asset. And they do have a life expectancy. I'll do it. So I think we also need to take a look at, well, if we buy 100 radios, I'm just, I'm just spitballing the number. If I buy 100 radios, we really need to look at down the road as these things start to go out of service, how we're going to do replacement radios as well. We need to phase that in also. We need to see, we need to inventory what they have now, what's good and how are they gonna relate some new radios coming along? Because what I hear, there's an issue of, you know, what talks to what. I, I know that we've met with, and the mayor's here, we met with the folks over at the university a couple of weeks ago, we'll be with them, I think, next week and the week after. And their radios are really old. And now we, we're not responsible for buying the university radio, but we, you know, they know that they've got to get those as well. So whatever we buy, if we buy all Toyota's, we should buy all Toyota's. I'm just saying now.
Well, that's why it would make sense to buy one box, so they're all uniformed and hopefully serve the same purpose.
Same batteries, chargers, all that.
Just keep in mind also that, you know, Baker's gonna ask for some that are water resistant because they do the water rescue. So there's gonna be probably a purchase of some specialty or in that manner. So let's, let's not forget that when we're, we're talking to them.
Yeah, we can go ahead. We'll dishate that. I'm sure they're gonna get back to me very quickly, what they need.
Do we want to designate a certain portion of the balance?
So what's this at like 300, 350 or something like that?
Say if we just wait until we get that back and then we could proceed with. Say, if we just wait until we get that back, and then we could proceed with scheduled, to schedule meeting, follow up, to decide.
It's, I don't disagree with you, but there's some of these I think we could fund before we hear back. It's up to the commission, I'm just my person.
I mean, ESA, those are here, well, we've already taken possession of those radios, so we're good with the ESA.
So how many radios were that?
There are 42,000, something like that, I don't know what that number is. Yeah, I've got it.
I don't know, I'd care more than a little number. All of the fire stations. Four on you, that'd be nice. That's why I was thinking, wait.
You might take all the.
You might take all of it.
And I guess the next question, I kind of agree with Commissioner Jackson, we only receive requests from three of them. Yeah. I feel like we just need to consider their requests.
Well, let me do this, let me, let me email all the, I'll shoot emails to all the fire companies. I'll work through Bobber, and we'll just get what they need. And then we'll start figuring out what that cost is. And then I think we need to look at factoring in some spares. There's going to be spares now, but what I heard from Chief Moon is, I think what I heard from Chief Moon is, I want to make a clarification, is I think they're looking to buy more than what they need because they're looking at spares, it's a smart thing to do.
Yeah.
So I could ask them what bare minimum they need, and then I could build spares into that. I can say, what do you need, what are you looking at for spares? I have no idea.
Right now, just between the three, so.
Yeah, I'd like to get an idea on radio cost or needs, and, you know, and then if we have any money, look at some of the other stuff, I think. You've got a lot of worthy projects. There's always so much money. And do we have a timeline with when we have to? Maybe there's a timeline deadline for approval or a time.
We just have to have, we have to have funds encumbered or expensed by 12/31/2024. By encumbered, they mean like if we have a large construction project, we have to have a contract in place with that contractor that says the contract is still ongoing. So maybe, most of our stuff isn't going to be large construction contracts, so we need to have it spent by 12/31/2024. We have time, it doesn't need to be decided today.
Okay.
So do we want to schedule another meeting for a month from now? Or were there any small projects you wanted to go ahead and review today? I think we have a lot of work model projects, a lot of, a lot of need in the community, maybe takes some time to digest it.
Yeah.
This is, this is going to be the toughest part of this, so.
We're going to the bottom of the barrel.
To really figure out.
Hi, it's finally. We've already heard from some that we, we need to come back to you as well, so. Let's schedule a time, and I will prepare a schedule of just those that are still pending, so that we can just focus on those. If we want to meet again in September, if we want to wait, and maybe October 13th, I'll give this one time to get.
They got COVID, but.
February 30th?
Yeah.
9:30 or 1 o'clock? The next meeting will be 10:13 PM, we'll get just one confirmation on the radios, and I'll get you a schedule of just the project that happened at that decision.
With that, is there anything else to come for the commission today? If there's no objection, we are adjourned.